Good evening. And welcome back to our December meeting. My name is Alexis Folgueris, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. This evening, I have asked Bob May, the current chairman of District 12, who served for 40 years, and Tom Byrne, who has served for 36 years, 26 of those as moderator, and who will both be retiring after this evening's meeting to lead us in the pledge. So gentlemen, I welcome you to the podium.
Can you hear me? There we go. Madam Moderator, it has been my privilege for 36 years to be a member of this body where we can disagree passionately on issues of public policy, but do so respectfully. And I'm proud that despite our disagreements, we affirm at the start of each meeting the one unbreakable bond that unites us together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Byrne, you might want to sit in the front and not get too comfy in your seat, but I would like to recognize Barbara Hinman now, who is that new chairwoman of District 12.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Hinman, and tonight I'm still the vice chair of District 12. And our esteemed chair, Bob May, is retiring after 40 years representing District 12 on the Greenwich RTM, the past 18 as our district chair. He's also served on the Finance Committee and on the Moderator Special Committee on RTM Rules and Governance. As chair, Bob has been the model of how to lead effectively. He is always well-prepared, having read, distributed, and recorded the reports and votes of all the standing committees prior to our district meetings. He routinely fills in for delegates who cannot attend committee meetings, ensuring that District 12 is always represented. Bob runs our district meetings efficiently, fairly, and with respect for all members and guests. Everyone is heard. In 18 years as vice chair under Bob, I have not had much to do. I stepped in to run a few meetings in 2014 when Bob broke his leg. This was pre-Zoom. In March of 2020, though not a techie himself, in fact, I don't even know if his cellphone model is still in production, Bob made sure that every member of the district was able to transition to Zoom meetings during COVID. The hallmark of Bob's service throughout his 40 years has been his unwavering support of public education. Bob's wife Linda was a teacher at Coscoth School. Bob has supported fully funding B.O.E. operating budgets and capital projects to improve and rebuild our schools. Bob, please accept this gift as a token of our appreciation from the members of District 12.
I'd now like to recognize first select, acting for select woman, I guess, today, but select person Lauren Raven to offer a proclamation.
Thanks, everyone. Whereas Robert T. May was born in Chicago, Illinois, and moved to Greenwich in his early teens, where he attended Greenwich Public Schools. He is a 1968 graduate of the University of Bridgeport and enlisted in the U.S. Army, where he served as an officer in the Field Artillery from 1968 to 1971. And whereas, he returned to Greenwich and married Coscoth School teacher Linda Lauren and raised a daughter, Melinda, in Havemeyer Park area of Old Greenwich. He has been a loving caregiver to his three grandchildren, Zachary, Elisa, and Noah. And whereas, he's worked in sales, including in the private-label soap division of Procter &amp; Gamble, providing contract manufacturing services for major companies. And whereas, he was elected to District 12 Representative Town Meeting in 1984 and has served continuously for 40 years. He served as chair of District 12 and was the District 12 delegate to the Finance Committee for several terms. We work together on the Finance Committee. He served as a special committee on the RTM governance. And whereas, he is a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy and is an active member of the Community and Police Partnership. And whereas, we thank him for his 40 years of dedicated service to the town of Greenwich. And now, therefore, on behalf of Fred Camillo, first-elect member of the town of Greenwich, we do hereby proclaim December 11, 2023, as Robert T. May Day in the town of Greenwich and urge all of our residents to join us in recognizing his years of dedicated service to our community.
Is Hector Arzeno here? We have another proclamation from Representative Arzeno.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Good evening, Bob.
First to business. This is coming from the General Assembly, which means the Senate and the representative and the four of us that represents Greenwich in Connecticut. And is introduced by Representative Meskers, Representative Kana, Senator Fazio, and myself. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Robert May in recognition of his service for 40 years on the RTM and the quiet dignity with which you carry yourself, a soldier, husband, father, and a grandfather. You serve this town so steadfastly. And we, the Greenwich delegation, present you with this citation, and we thank you for your service to our community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope to continue success, given this eighth date of November 2023 at the State Capitol and signed by Martin Looney, President Pro tempore, the Speaker of the House, Mr. Matt Ritter, and Stephanie Thomas, Secretary of State. And before we keep going, and I will give you this, I would like to say a few words, Robert, if I may. And I would like to refer to you as a neighbor, RTM member, committee delegate, chair of District 12, soldier, husband, father, and grandfather. And I say "us," not "me," because I know you, but I also have to speak to others, too. And Bob, you are one of a kind, a real gentleman and a role model to all of us and especially to me. The way you run District 12 over the years with respect, objectivity, listening to others and accepting their comments, in other words, an example to what the word of civility means. Bob, you are remembered for what all of us would like to be remembered, at least myself, a good person and a solid bastion for your daughter and grandchildren. Thank you very much for your legacy.
I had the pleasure of working with Bob on the Governance Committee, which was a long and difficult committee to be part of. And he was always gracious, dependable. He had a quiet resolve. He handled problems just diplomatically and was a fantastic member to work with. He is also one of two people, along with Bob McKnight, who drafted the Chairman's Manual that we all enjoy. So I thank you for that. And on behalf of the RTM, we have a gift for you. And I realize that what I'm about to give you, you should probably get at the beginning of your term, not as you're retiring, which is a good bottle of booze and some glasses to go with it. Mr. Byrne is next. About six years ago, when I was first considering running for the job of moderator pro tem under Tom, who was then the moderator, our town attorney at the time, John Wayne Fox, pulled me aside. I was in the Everrester Room, I remember. And he asked me if I knew what I was about to get into. I'm sure he asked this because Tom and I have completely opposite temperaments, work styles, and personalities. And in case you didn't know, Tom has a history of not using his inside voice when he gets excited about something. No problem, I told Wayne. I can handle it. I've been a professional social worker for 30 years. I've seen it all. Wayne leans in, and he says, "In that case, I'm just going to give you one piece of advice, Alexis." And his advice was, "When you are in a situation with Tom and you see the vein in his neck start to bulge, you are going to want to take three steps back." I know Tom didn't want any fuss over his retirement from the RTM, and I'm guessing that if the neck vein isn't bulging now, it will be in a few minutes. But I feel very well-buffered as I stand here at the Byrne podium. And as an extra precaution, I'm wearing a pair of sneakers this evening in case I have to make a fast break for it. Tom has served on the RTM for 36 years, 26 of which he served as the moderator. He's the longest-serving moderator in the history of the RTM, and he has never once missed a full meeting. It's remarkable. Tom has been the RTM's greatest advocate, defender, and cheerleader. Whenever the RTM's authority to do something came under attack or when someone attempted to float the idea that the RTM should be made smaller, you could count on Tom to vigorously and loudly defend the RTM. In fact, the very first time I ever saw Tom, he was doing just that, defending the size of the RTM. He was on TV. I had a very young baby at home who was fussy, and I figured that if local TV doesn't put a kid to sleep, nothing will. So we settled in to watch a show on GCTV. The show that I happened to stumble upon involved three people whom I had never seen or heard of before talking about something I had also never heard of before, the RTM. The discussion focused on, "Should the RTM be reduced in size?" And Tom, wanting to illustrate his point that the RTM should be large and welcoming of 230 people who want to serve their community, appeared to pull out of his suit coat pocket a very large glass of orange juice, which presumably represented the current size of the RTM. And then he proceeded to pour some of that juice into a much smaller glass to demonstrate, "Why would anyone want to leave some extra juice behind? Why would we ever consider turning away people who want to serve the RTM?" Meanwhile, the juice is spilling. Things are getting sticky. Peter Tessie and Jim Lash are smiling while simultaneously backing away from the juice demonstration. And I am at home thinking, with a now-quiet baby, local cable TV is super weird in Greenwich, but this juice guy is also very interesting. Fast forward a year. My neighbor, Arlene Lamazo, encourages me to run for the RTM, and I arrive at my first District 6 meeting after having been elected. And who do I find at the table? None other than Tom Byrne. And for the next 18 years, I have had the absolute privilege of working with him, being mentored by him, and arguing with baseball over him. I should mention that Tom and I are both avid baseball followers, but he roots for the team that should not be mentioned from the Bronx. And I, of course, support the greatest franchise that ever played the game, the Boston Red Sox. Tom, your retirement leaves an enormous void, especially in District 6. Your comments at our meeting were always insightful, sometimes insightful with an "S" and sometimes insightful with a "C." But we knew at D6 that you always had a deep appreciation for the town you chose to raise your family in and that you were deeply humbled and honored to lead the RTM, something that you often referred to as the greatest live theater in town. You leave behind a legacy known for the fair and even-handed way you moderated meetings. People might not have always agreed with you or liked the rulings you made, but they knew that you were doing it in a fair and honest way. I hope that you will continue to visit and speak out when you want the RTM to consider an issue. I'm also hoping that you'll get a bit bored of retirement and come back. In the meantime, I would like to present you with the same bottle of booze and some glasses, but also something else, with this jacket, which says, "Town of Greenwich, Tom Byrne, RTM 6", with the "6" serving the dual purpose of you were moderator number 6 and you also represent District 6. So I'm hoping that you will wear it in good health and perhaps rove around town as the roving parliamentarian. You can call people out of order or, you know, points of order, whatever, up and down Greenwich Avenue or wherever, Old Greenwich. But thank you for everything you have given the RTM, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you all very much. It's been the privilege of a lifetime to be a member of this body. And I've always said it's all about the people over the years. So it's been my honor to work with you and to all who have come before you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to recognize Stephen Meskers, who has a proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I had the privilege of joining the RTM. I think the question is 20 or 19 years ago as our former moderator, for me, on my vote count or my count of the years. But I've served for about 20 years in District 6. And I can't tell you what a privilege and pleasure it's been to serve with Tom as moderator and in our district. There's been nothing but solid advice, good counsel. And when it comes to partisanship, what I always found was you'd walk out of a meeting and half the people you liked came out mad one week and half the people you didn't like came out mad the next week. And I thought the balance in the decision-making, the attempt at equanimity or balance in judgment was just overwhelming. So just as a personal note, it's been my privilege. And now, the benefit of being in the General Assembly on behalf of Hector, Rachel, myself, and Ryan Fazio, be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Thomas J. Byrne in recognition of Tom Byrne's 36 years of service to the Greenwich RTM, of which 26 of those years served as the moderator. Under your leadership, you encouraged thousands of residents to join their legislative body and gave voice to our feelings, citing on how important issues are handled. We, the Greenwich delegation, present you with this citation and thank you for your service to our community. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success on behalf of President of the Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matthew Ritter, and the Secretary of State, Stephanie Thomas. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. There are a few other people that I would like to thank. I would like to thank all of our outgoing members who are not returning next term. I would like to thank three chairs who will be leaving us. I would like to thank three chairs who will be leaving us, Michael Spiloe, Lomena Sinovic, and Kimberly Salib. And I'd like to thank them for their service. I'd like to thank two of our district tabulators. The tabulators are probably the hardest-working people, certainly that got us through COVID, David Oliver, who was working out of District 11, and Lee Hong Zhang, who was working out of District 1. And, yep. And I'd also like to congratulate our RTM members who will be moving up to the BETs, Scott Calb, Matt Duchamp, and Lucia Jansen. So I wish everyone good luck as they start their next term. Okay, now on to the business of the meeting. We have two sets of minutes to consider as all members have received a copy of the minutes from October 23 and the special meeting on October 30. The reading of those minutes shall be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes from the October 23 and the October 30 meeting stand adopted by unanimous consent. We do have two announcements. Bob, is Scott Calb still here or has he left? Scott Calb is here. He can go first because he has the retirement, and he needs to leave in 10 minutes, anyway. So Scott Calb, a member of the RTM liaison to the Retirement Board.
Thank you all, everybody. I just wanted to say, first of all, it's been my honor to work with you these past four years. Thank you all very much for the opportunity. It's been great. And I look forward to staying in touch with you and to working with you and doing whatever I can to help from the BET. I just wanted to give a quick overview to you guys about the Retirement Board. As you know, I've been serving as liaison to the Retirement Board for the RTM. And just to let you know, it's a great group to be working with. It's a great example of bipartisanship. People work together, and they've done a terrific job. To let you know, on a one-year, three-year, five-year, and 10-year basis, the Retirement Fund has beaten its benchmark. And even year-to-date, it's beaten its benchmark. So they've done a great job there. And I think the other thing that's really important for you to know is that the contribution that the town has to make to the Retirement Board to keep its funded status intact is actually going down as a result of the good work of the Retirement Board. The projected number was supposed to be $28 million this year. It's actually going down to $27 million. That's actually a $2.7 million savings over the contribution from the previous year. So that's really important for our town. We're saving almost $3 million as a result of the work that they're doing. Now, it doesn't mean that every year it's going to be like that, but it's just a good signal. So that's all. Just want to let you know it's been in good hands. And thanks again for giving me the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, Chair of our Appointments Committee, will be talking about some of the special committees you're hoping to recruit for, I hope.
Good evening. I'm Bob McKnight, Chair of your Appointments Committee. Your Appointments Committee is asking for candidates to serve on our special committees and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Council. Two Advisory Council members from the RTM will stand for nomination by the Appointments Committee for appointment to the RTM at the March meeting. The purpose of the AHTFAC is the preservation of existing and creation of new affordable rental and home ownership in town. The Labor Contracts Committee is seeking seven regular members and two alternates for appointment by the RTM also at the March meeting. This committee advises our body with respect to approving our town's various labor contracts. Their duties include examining and analyzing each contract, reviewing town personnel policy and compensation practices, and explaining these complex problems and solutions to our body. Skill sets include labor relations, human resources, labor negotiation, mediation, conflict resolution, contract analysis, and report writing. The Claims Committee is seeking nine regular members and two alternates for appointment also at our March meeting. This powerful committee has the power to speak on behalf of the entire RTM to approve appropriation of the Board of Estimate and Taxation for payment, compromise, or settlement upon recommendation of the town attorney of any claim against the town. Skill sets include litigation, risk management, negotiation, general legal expertise, and insurance expertise. All candidates should, as soon as possible, and I stress that, as soon as possible, submit a CV to our Secretary, June Collins. The deadline to submit materials for the Claims Committee is 12 noon Friday, January 5. The deadline to submit materials for the Labor Contracts Committee and the AHTFAC is 12 noon Friday, January 26. Any further information required will be provided by myself or our Secretary, June Collins. We will be interviewing applicants for all three of these at our January 9 meeting. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And the final announcement that I would like to make is I would like to thank Kath Bergweger, who is a member of the Greenwich League of Women Voters. And Kath was responsible for preparing and formatting the RTM component for the election guide that is handed out. And so we thank her for taking many hours out of her day to do that for us. Okay, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notify the membership I would recommend the following organization of our agenda this evening. Consent items 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 17, and 18. Combined, 10 and 11. Separate, 1, 6, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, and 20. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 17, and 18 to our consent calendar. And if those items continue to remain there, you will hear no committee reports, and you will hear what I'm about to say is the following. Item number two is the appointment of Ann Alexander to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31, 2028. Item number three is the appointment of Dennis Jesky to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring October 31, 2025. Item number four is the appointment of Elliot Benton to be a regular member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency, one word, for a term expiring October 31, 2027. for a term expiring October 31st, 2027. Item five is the appointment of John Velocia to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring October 31st, 2027. Item number seven is the appointment of Margaret McSherry Martino to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Weatherall Board of Directors for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item eight is an appropriation for $33,000 for the HVAC boiler project at the library. Item 10, I need to offer a one-word substitute resolution, thanks to Ellen R., which caught it. And that is, this is a resolution for the construction and maintenance of DPW. And the word on the electric distribution easement, in the fourth paragraph, first line, the word deed, and I believe it should say easement. So changing the one word from deed to easement. And so that is the easement for the EverSource Energy Project located at 90 Harding Road. And then I think we jumped down to item 17 is resolved that the representative town meeting authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC project at Julian Curtis School. And our last item on the consent calendar is item 18, which is an appropriation for $2,197,499 to be added to various accounts for special education. Is there any opposition to the designation of those items on the consent calendar? Craig, will you please prepare the voting window for the consent calendar items? Okay. Let me know when it's open. It should be open. Yep. So if you are intending to vote yes, or you agree with the consent calendar items, you would press yes. If you are opposed to the consent calendar items, you would vote no. You'll have about two minutes to vote. The voting window will close in about 30 seconds. So if your intention is to vote, now would be a good time to do so. Okay, has everyone voted that wants to vote? Are there any issues with anybody's clicker that we need to be worried about right now? Or can I close the vote? Okay, I'm not hearing of any issues. So I'm going to ask Craig to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote for the consent calendar item? Okay, I have the vote on the consent calendar item. Those in favor, 179. Opposed, 3. Abstaining, 0. Those items have carried. That now brings us to, oh, I'm sorry, you have to show, sorry, show it. I'm jumping the gun. Okay, there you go. We'll leave that up for a few minutes. We now come to our consent calendar items, items 10 and 11. In order to combine items, we need a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to combine for voting purposes, items 11 and 12. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. We can do this by unanimous consent, or we can take a record vote. Is there any objection to suspending the rules to combine for voting purposes, items 11 and 12? Hearing none, the motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes, items 11 and 12, has been adopted upon unanimous consent. So item 11 is now before us, and I believe Vin DeMar, oh, are you reading 11 or is Vin DeMarco reading 11? Okay, you can read the resolution. Michael Kessleck, a member of the DPW Civil Engineering Department. You're just reading 11 now. Yep.
All right. Hello, everybody. Item 11, resolved that the sum $338,000 being the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account, Z312-59600-TOBDETERMINED, known as Greenwich-Stanford Multi-Use Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adaption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees and districts that considered this item, please? It looks like Peter Berg, you want to go first. Peter Berg of our Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. Good evening, fellow members. The Land Use Committee took up item 11 and 12 last Monday. Jim Michael, our Deputy Director of Public Works, presented the case for approving a $338,000 interim funding grant for the planning and design phase of the Greenwich-Stanford multi-use path. About 78% of the path will be in Greenwich, 23% in Stamford. The path would be mostly paved and separate from the road. A large map of a potential path was shown. Our, the Land Use Committee vote on this item was four in favor, three opposed, four abstentions, and District 4 was absent. So Christina Volklein, our District 2 rep, raised concerns that the path had not been properly posted to the general public. Sally Bednar from District 6 potentially likes the idea, but would like to see the design before approval and speak further to her district members. Peter Quigley from District 3 said that the timing is terrible in terms of funding. The location is bad, and questioned the purpose of linking the two parks. Other concerns were raised about the need for eminent domain, the future shared cost of the path, and the fact that residents of Old Greenwich had not been canvassed. Jim Michael responded that a feasibility study would answer most of these concerns, and that they would explore multiple ways to fund the project through outside funding sources. President, president in our audience was Ernst Schirmer from District 8, who noted that, that he does not feel safe biking around town. There is a need for safer biking options, and that we should move forward with the study. Bob D'Angelo said there are more cars and traffic than ever before, and that kids should have a safe way to gain freedom by riding bikes to and from school. He believes the path could also attract young families to town. Lucia Jansen, Chair of the Budget Overview Committee, raised multiple concerns, including the lack of proper notice to the, to the Budget Overview Committee, lack of proper public notice. Jim Michael responded, he felt proper public notice had been given. Once again, the Land Use Committee vote on this item was four in favor, three opposed, four abstentions, District 4 absent.
Brooks Harris, our Finance Chair.
Thank you. Peter did a very good job at describing what the proposal was. So I'll just talk about what people discussed in committee. Jim Michael, the Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Public Works, attended and answered questions on this. The meeting started with Mr. Michael assuring us the path was not necessarily the one that would be considered, the one that was in our material. He told us the money was needed to gauge the feasibility of the proposed path, determine neighborhood interest or resistance to the idea, as well as fund the identification and funding of other paths which may make more sense. He further stated that the BET had conditioned this interim so that only some of the money could be spent before the actual location of the path was known. Finance has, okay. Mr. Michaels was asked if the proposed multi-use path had been included in the 15-year capital budget, sometimes referred to as the CIP, which the RTM passed in May. He responded that it had not, but he intended to include it at some future date. Including capital items in the capital plan allows members to prioritize and sequence priorities. Requesting capital items à la carte allows the perennial risk of projects jumping the queue and potentially crowding out greater needs. Mr. Michael was reminded that the League of Women Voters had done an extensive review of capital planning in Greenwich, which strongly recommended using the capital plan to prioritize and sequence projects. Mr. Michael reminded the committee that most of the cost of the request was being borne by Hartford and Stanford, so such scrutiny was not really needed. Mr. Michaels was asked how residents along the route felt about the project. He responded that some of the funds he saw would be used to gather such feedback as part of the feasibility study. Only a small amount of the funds would be expended on this as gathering feedback by hosting local forums and through other means is easy and inexpensive. This would likely be done before any construction could begin. Some members touted the benefit of being able to travel around town without driving, and this path would facilitate that. Mr. Michaels concurred this was a primary motivation for the path. Some members were concerned that the chosen endpoint of Bucusi Park may have too much crime, given that someone was murdered there earlier this year. Again, Mr. Michaels reminded us the final path was subject to review and could be quite different. The element, the ultimate endpoint could potentially be a location which had no recent murders at all. Some members asked if we had not just spent money to build a new sidewalk on the route, and would this not require us to rip up this recent investment? I was disappointed that Mr. Michaels did not invoke the economic theory of sunk cost, but instead maintained that answering that would be part of the feasibility study, and that alternate routes with other sidewalks may be considered. Some members worried that Sound Beach is narrow in places, and building a path may require substantial demolition of existing malls, bridges, and other impediments, as well as the use of eminent domain to obtain needed land. Mr. Michael stated that those considerations and more would be addressed in a feasibility study. He also reminded us that the representative plan, which had been included in the description and explanatory, was not necessarily the path that would be used, and some of this money could be used to pick an alternative path that may be more feasible and could potentially require no use of eminent domain at all. Finance rejected items 11 and 12 by a vote of 5, 6, 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Le Balbo with our Parks and Rec Chair Report.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM. Your Park and Recreation Committee took this up last week on Tuesday evening in a joint meeting with the Transportation Committee. I made a report on some of the items that were discussed. There was an emphasis, we were joined by Jim Michaels as well from Department of Public Works, and some members from the Appointed Selectmen's Transportation Committee. Emphasis was put on appropriate speeds and multi-uses of the pathway, noting that, you know, there's can be actually scooters, there can be electronic scooters, electronic bikes. There can be biking for recreation versus biking for maybe more competitive biking. And so that there would be an emphasis, the committee said they would like to see an emphasis on appropriate speeds and multi-use on the path. An emphasis on needing a traffic study that goes beyond the near miss, that goes beyond just a regular traffic study and picks up near miss information. Maybe just not a, not a traditional traffic and accident study. That looking for appropriate pathways and not committing to shore road was an important item that was brought up. Jim brought with him a map of a number of alternate different routes highlighted, and said, you know, you know, this wasn't a defined item at this point. Protecting tree growth and canopy was important to your Park and Recreation Committee, as well as limiting light spread and impact to the residents along the path. DBW said that the property within the town right-of-way was mostly in the town right-of-way that would be used for the path, and in some cases would be an expansion of existing sidewalks. An estimated expense to implement the path was around $4 million, or was quoted at about $4 million. This was given with a huge caveat that, as it's not planned, this number is really, you know, not something that they felt strongly about committing to, but we're just giving an order of magnitude for us. Members were concerned that this would compete with other capital needs as we embark on an ambitious capital plan for school construction. The expenditure is limited by BET, so the department cannot exceed $127,000 benchmark with an 80% reimbursement. That brings the expenditure to a, just under $25,000 expenditure before the department would have to return to the BET. Considering all the items before us and the robust conversation, the vote from the committee was eight in favor, four against, and zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple other committees and districts. Transportation is, Anthony Moore is going to give that report, Vice Chairman of the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, members. Can you hear me? I'm not going to repeat what other committees and other reports have said. I'll try and be a little additive here. Our joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Committee also learned that the path itself is intended to help residents move around Old Greenwich more safely without cars, including enabling people to bring their children to Old Greenwich School on a bike, for instance, not necessarily to go to Stamford and back. Mr. Michael also said that the endpoints of the path are fixed. And in discussion, it was that they represent points along the East Coast Greenway. And in Greenwich, there is this East Coast Greenway which exists on maps only. It's really just a indication of a route that a bicyclist could take on roads. But connecting any path in Old Greenwich to East Coast Greenway endpoints made it more attractive for state funding because the project would also improve the East Coast Greenway route. Also because a protected path like this is a first in Greenwich, Michael said that they felt that this study would also help us understand how we might be able to do things like this in other parts of Greenwich, that the findings of this first phase of planning and design would give us information that could be applied across Greenwich as well. Questions and concerns from the Transportation Committee echo what you've already heard. Most prominently, you know, how could busy Sound Beach, especially the commercial district, accommodate a multi-use path? Again, Michael described this as one of a number of possible routes that the community would have to sign off on. I don't, he didn't use the word "sign off," but the community would have input on before any additional funding was going to be lifted by the BET. So after the joint meeting, we separated, and there was no further discussion from the Transportation Committee on both items. The vote was eight, one, zero in favor, with Districts D5, 9, and 11 absent. Importantly, the Old Greenwich District, District 6's delegate, explained their no vote as one that centered on the fact that the route must extend into Stamford, and Greenwich residents have no need for that. If the path were in another section of town, they said they would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Craig Ametson?
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
Madam Moderator, visitors and guests. We, we took this item up last Monday, on the, on the, on the 4th. And I'm not going to go through all the things that have been mentioned, but there was a lot of material in here, and we felt there were way too many unanswered questions to really seriously entertain this particular motion as it was. Some of the things that we felt strongly about, some of us who had gone through previously the Parrot Library Roundabout Project in Old Greenwich, learned a pretty quick lesson. And that is, if you're going to do something that's going to impact the community like Old Greenwich, you ought to talk to them about it upfront and let them know what's going on there. In this case, the concern was that we're, we're in the 11th hour trying to get money appropriated here prior to the end of the year, or we run the risk of not having that money available. This, this item became known to the town the end of August. So we found it a little disconcerting that we're getting it in December, where we have very little time to act on this and basically scrutinize it. very little time to act on this and basically scrutinize it. Some of the things that concerned us that go a little bit beyond what was already discussed was the size of the pathway as it goes across somebody's, the end of somebody's yard, yes, in the right-of-way. But in a situation where there's already a sidewalk, let's say it's five feet, the ideal width for this pathway is eight to 10 feet. So even if there's a five-foot sidewalk, they're talking about potentially taking additional in the right-of-way, three feet to eight to five feet of additional space, and significantly altering the front yards of people's homes. In addition to that, the item was discussed as far as who would be responsible for maintaining it, for taking off snow in bad weather. We were told, oh, homeowners, just like a sidewalk. So suddenly, now you've got something that may be being put in on, it may not be your property, it's right-of-way, but it looks like your property and feels like your property. And we think that that requires some consideration. In addition to just having this pathway, there were other things in the materials that were published, you know, they were talking about protecting the canopy, and yes, we're going to lose some trees. But there were also things in about potential use of e-bikes and e-scooters on this pathway, which concerns people. There were also, there was also a discussion of including bike racks, benches, trashcans, lighting, self-service bicycle repair slash mechanic stations with tire pumps and other tools, and that additional parking at trailheads at both the Binney side and Bucuzzi side would be necessary so that people could drive, drop their car, take their bikes, and go for a ride. We're not necessarily saying that we're opposed to this project getting some attention, but we didn't feel, one of my terms, that it was ready for primetime. In addition to the possible route, which would go from Binney down Sound Beach Avenue to Shore Road and then back up in, towards Bucuzzi, other possible streets involved in Old Greenwich are Arch Street, Brownhouse Road, Forest Avenue, Harding Road, Lockwood Avenue, Shore Road, Sound Beach Avenue, Tomac Avenue, Westwood Road, which has received a scenic road status, and West End Avenue. There are so many unanswered questions that honestly, we didn't feel that we were in a position to be able to really sort through that. A motion was made to postpone this item. We took that vote. That vote was 5-5-0. The motion to postpone failed. We then took up the motion as the item appears on the call, and that also received a 5-5-0 vote, which meant it failed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of our VOC Committee.
Good evening. As you know, your Budget Overview Committee is the first committee to consider call items, so we were the first of many of the committee reports. DPW did come in with a request for their $338,000 interim appropriation, which is a $4 million projected cost project. So we took it up with the vision of the long-term cost component to it. It is for a multi-use bicycle path project, and we were looking at it in terms of what impact it would have to the capital improvement plan that currently is there. So as we have heard tonight, kind of the cart before the horse, a state grant was received for this multi-use path that pays for all but $49,400 of the $338,000 for the creation of this multi-use path. The application was submitted jointly with the City of Stamford with the idea of creating a regional kind of east-west greenway bicycle path project. The main artery that was described as the primary route is Sound Beach Avenue to Shore Road. The difficulty in this project is that it is a multi-use path objective, and we overall love the idea of exploring this. The difficulty is that the two endpoints is Bucuzzi Park and Binney Park. And for you Old Greenwich residents, and for all of us who have enjoyed our amenities there, which includes Greenwich Point Beach, the to-be-released Eastern Greenwich Civic Center for all those pickleball players who go across the town to here, there's multiple amenities in this area that attract people from across the town. So these two endpoints are very important to understand. Michaels described that they were non-negotiable, and other multi-use path opportunities with parks that might be better suited are not part of this grant. The Board of Selectmen had approved this grant, as well as the BET. However, when the BET considered this, they did hear that community involvement was limited, so they added a condition that required Michaels to have a public hearing for the specific Sound Beach Avenue to Shore Road route. It was mentioned earlier, the new facilities that will be at Binney Park in the future, which will be a new car parking lot, bicycle repair, mechanic stations, racks, lighting, and other amenities. The VOC's committee's response was swift and vocal with deep concerns with this primary path down Sound Beach Avenue to Shore Road. Several concerns mentioned were the heavily congested gridlocked traffic. The Sound Beach is the main artery to Greenwich Point. The new, which the VOC was proud to support, $750,000 sidewalks on Shore Road that are four feet wide and not the eight to 10 feet wide required for a multi-use path. The narrow streets with many obstacles, including stone walls, trees, Belgium-block driveways. There was concern that eminent domain may be invoked in order to create the side path. And then the, what was mentioned earlier, the legal responsibility of the homeowner to shovel the snow in order to keep the path safe. VOC members felt it was, for the Department of Public Works to be spending time on this particular route was wasting time and money and to explore other streets and paths between these two endpoints. The VOC, at the time that we met, decided to reconvene to gather additional insights. So tonight, after all the committee meetings and more information learned, we met to take the vote. Once again, the VOC members expressed deep concern with the lack of community involvement. More so was also the impact to the CIP projects, because in fact, this $4 million project could and will prioritize, be prioritized, and other projects that had been in line, that have been vetted, that have been prioritized, are now going to be potentially postponed. The vote by the VOC was three in favor, seven against. District 1 and 8 were absent, and so the interim appropriation failed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Colleen Jenkins, Chairwoman of District 6.
Happy holidays. This is a gift-giving season. Here's the gift. This is a gift to Old Greenwich. It is $34,000, $3400,000. What's inside the box? The contents are unknown. It seems the gift is a multi-use trail for bikers, schoolchildren, joggers, bikes with baskets and buckets, motorized vehicles, and seniors. The traffic flows two ways on a path that's eight to 10 feet wide. The path is considered a sidewalk. And as any of you know, that has a sidewalk in front of your house, you don't own it, but you're responsible for snow removal and ice removal. We've already heard that the path is down Sound Beach Avenue, south to Shore Road, east to Stamford, or wait a minute, it's through Riverside, east on Forest, then south on Tomac. The new, and even one option is to replace the existing greenway path, bike path, that's on Harding that goes into Stamford, so that seems to be redundant. There are many questions. How many parking spaces will be constructed in Binney Park, the head of the trail? There are many more questions about this imposed gift. At our District 6 meeting last Thursday, we voted on a motion to support only the feasibility study and commit to no more. Crucial to the feasibility study is the input from local residents and Old Greenwich organizations. We must ask, how does First Congregational Church feel about losing street parking to a 10-foot multi-use path? It would probably cut their parking capacity in half. How do parents feel about kids walking to school, as they already do, on a path with two-way traffic with motorized bikes and bikes with big buckets? It's a very Old Greenwich. How does Old Greenwich Association feel about it? They represent thousands of homeowners. It's really important that they opine. How does engineering squeeze a 10-foot path on Tomac Avenue, a circuitous road that is narrow, hilly, and curvy, and it's hundreds of years old? Is eminent domain, the claiming of land at market value in the works, and is that part of the financial calculations? So in Old Greenwich, there are many questions. We're a community that is represented by the legislative body here today, and we want to know what's inside that gift box. Tonight, District 6 publicly supports citizen input via feasibility study that includes local knowledge and opinions. We have experienced top-down gifts that took hundreds of hours to reject, at least in part. We hope this is a collaborative process, not just one interest group that will prevail. All people matter. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Colleen, did you want to share the vote, or maybe I missed that? Did you share the vote of the district?
12, this is only on the feasibility study. 12, 1, 5.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports and district reports for this item, so I'd now like to open it up for debate. This is debate on item 11, Trails, the $338,000 appropriation. And the first person I would like to recognize is Ben DeMarco. Is Ben here? Oh, there you are.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Members of the RTM, I haven't, I haven't been in front of this podium for a while. I was on this body for a number of years. Glad to see Tom Byrne, Mr. May, people that I served with and under. I also had the pleasure of saying hello to Lyle Gibbons tonight. She, I think she's still here. Lyle Gibbons, 21 years ago, I guess it was 21 years ago, she rode tandem, a tandem bicycle to Hartford, along with Franklin Blumer, the late Franklin Blumer, to raise awareness and support for the East Coast Greenway. That was a long time ago. The Greenway then came to be designated, and routes would be, were designated through, you know, from Florida all the way to Maine, mostly on road, and in particular in Fairfield County, it is all on road. You won't find any piece of off-road trail until you get up to West Haven. There's a little sliver, really, in Stamford, and if you go down the other way, you might, you will find an off-road path along the Marshaloo Parkway. So there's a, there's a big chasm in between there. All right. So a lot of what you heard tonight, the concerns, the questions, these are things that would be answered in the feasibility study. So I didn't know we were going to have a debate on it tonight. I thought we were just going to be debating the actual appropriation for the feasibility study as it is, because the whole amount, I mean technically, we're really only voting on $24,500. You are, on behalf of the rest of us residents, because that's all that can be spent based on the BET's condition. That's all that can be spent until there are public hearings, a public meeting, and nothing will happen if, at that point, it gets turned down. So all of these questions, all these fears and everything else about 10-foot-wide paths going down the middle of Sound Beach Avenue, Shore Road, and all that stuff, all of those things would be brought up in the feasibility study, the analysis of all the possible roads. A multi-use path is really the ultimate. We'd love to see that happen somehow, but there are so many other possibilities there. It doesn't have to necessarily be a multi-use path. Right now, we don't have any. We don't even have, well, let me, let me get on with my, my formal, I guess, proponent speech. This is a request to endorse the expenditure of a small amount of money to explore the feasibility of options. I can't see any more either, I have to be honest with you. To make active transportation safer and more accessible for Old Greenwich residents of all ages and abilities. Active transportation, also known as active mobility, all forms of human-powered locomotion, walking, jogging, bicycling, scootering, skating, wheelchairs, et cetera, all of which promote a healthier lifestyle and provide alternatives to automobile travel, among other benefits. Active transportation understood as bicycling and walking and prescribed for decades in town plans, such as the latest, the last several plans of conservation and developments, POCDs, per resident consensus. Following the 1998 POCD, a Bicycle Improvements Committee was formed under the aegis of P&amp;Z to address this, putting Greenwich way ahead of other municipalities in Fairfield County. Despite the completion of a bicycle master plan in 2001, Greenwich does not have so much as a legitimate bike lane. Residents of Old Greenwich are blessed with a wonderful little village with so many amenities that have been talked about, that are within reach of active transportation modes. Clearly, a good number of residents do walk or bike to school, to the train, to the beach, Binney Park, blah, blah, to shop and dine. Kudos to the Old Greenwich RTM delegation for voting in favor of this item, so residents can learn how active transportation might be made safer. A vote in favor by delegates in all other districts will support District 6 and signal that residents all over town are ready to consider how safe active transportation might benefit them in their own neighborhoods. To be clear, Greenwich will spend no more than that $24,500, as conditioned by the BET, as I said before. Nothing will get built unless the community wants it. DPW received confirmation today in writing that the Connecticut DEP is highly supportive of the review of paths not limited to those shown on the map. As per of the review of paths not limited to those shown on the map as part of the feasibility stage, and this falls within the scope of the grant. That's quotes. You can vote for this item and allow all residents the chance to benefit from this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris? Mr. Dedakis, an excellent observation, there is not. If you desire, you may.
I have a 10-minute speech here, so.
Are you? Two minutes per speaker, per motion, per item, with five minutes for the proponent and the opponent to be determined by the moderator, correct? Okay. Is there a second to that? Okay. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. So Craig, could you? I don't think we actually have one in the deck that's specific to Mr. Dedakis, but just check and see. We can try, but in we have people who are online, and so we hardly ever get a unanimous voice vote for the motion to limit debate, so I'd prefer to do a a record vote. I'm sorry. So if you could put up the voting. Okay. It would be the to memorialize it, the Dedakis motion, limit debate to two minutes per speaker, per motion, five minutes for the proponent. That was Mr. DeMarco already. And then the principal opponent to be determined by the moderator. Craig, could you open the voting window, please? Okay, that window should be open. You'll have two minutes to cast your vote. There's about 30 seconds left on the vote window. If your intention is to vote, now would be that time to to do it. Okay, I'm going to close the voting window. Craig, could you please close the voting window? Okay, I have the result on the vote to limit debate. Those in favor, 173; opposed, 10; abstaining, 1. That motion has carried, so for the balance of the meeting, each speaker will have two minutes per per speaker, per motion, and the principal proponent or opponent will be awarded up to five. Mr. Harris, you have two minutes on the clock.
I think I can do this in 30 seconds. I don't oppose multi-use paths, but there are two points I want to make here. The first is, I think it's really, really important for us to try and put projects, capital projects through the CIP process. That way, we will get the best projects we want, and we will sequence them in the order we want. And second, I think that this path itself that has been proposed is a bit fraught, and I would think that champions of multi-use trails should find a better path that would cause less controversy around the path itself, because I think almost, I think a lot of people like multi-use paths, but this path is probably not the best situated. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Barrett to be followed by Janet Stone McWiggin.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Greenwich community and fellow advocates for a sustainable future, my name is Aiden Fei. I'm a junior at the Greenwich Country Day School, as well as a member of the Earthrise Club, seem over there, that runs in conjunction with our sustainability diploma at Greenwich Country Day School. Today, I stand for you to discuss a crucial step towards climate action in our town. The creation of a dedicated bike path in Greenwich is not merely a request for funding, it is a call to action in the face of the global climate crisis. Greenwich, a town that prides itself on its natural beauty and community spirit, now has the opportunity to become a beacon of environmental responsibility. The proposed bike path is a tangible step towards reducing our carbon, carbon footprint. With a proportionally small expenditure, we are not just constructing a pathway, we are fostering a culture of eco-conscious transportation. This bike path will serve as a powerful tool in our fight against climate change. It will encourage a shift from car dependency to cycling, directly reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Imagine the impact of fewer cars in the road. Cleaner air, reduced noise pollution, and a significant contribution to reducing our overall town's environmental impact. Moreover, this project is an investment in educating our community about the importance of sustainable living. It sends a powerful message to our children, including me, about the importance of taking care of our planet. It's a step towards building a future where environmental consciousness is ingrained in our daily lives. This investment goes beyond the construction of a bike path. It's an investment in a greener Greenwich, in a community that values and actively participates in climate action. It's an investment in a future where our actions today create a healthier, more stable world for generations to come.
Time.
Thank you.
Janet Stone McWiggin to be followed by Anthony Moore.
For the record, my name is Janet Stone McWiggin. I'm a Greenwich Select Person, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this item. I have attended every meeting of the Active Transportation Task Force, formerly called the Bike Task Force. If it comes to fruition, this project would become an important component of the task force's vision of complete streets. The Greenwich Sustainability Committee recently adopted a vision statement, and similarly, a multi-use path would fit in its statement that, "Support is critical for sustainable transport options where streets and neighborhoods are connected to common spaces enjoyable for walking, biking, and other recreational uses." The route as currently proposed would follow the East Coast Greenway, and I have had the pleasure of biking this route with Vin DeMarco and Bob D'Angelo from the task force. And I can attest that it is a reasonable route even for a middle-aged recreational cyclist like myself. However, it is important to emphasize that what is being voted on tonight is a feasibility study, which would determine the ultimate pathway. Our community would be given the opportunity to learn more about this project and provide input. Last but not least, voting against this item goes directly against the town's best interests. As such, a vote would signal to Hartford that Greenwich does not want state money. Voting against this item would therefore make future grant opportunities much less likely. So I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Moore to be followed by Bob D'Angelo.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Members, I rise in support of this feasibility study because it represents the first dedicated dime spent on ways to include bicycling as transportation in at least 20 years in Greenwich. The last time we did so, it was to fund a Bicycle Master Plan, a plan that was never adopted. In 2001, that 69-page document presented a vision, goals, priorities, maps, design guidelines, and funding opportunities for a network that would undoubtedly have eliminated thousands of car trips monthly. Today, adults and kids could have safely ridden to places like schools, work, shopping, and Metro North. Instead, I bet you have a few bikes in your garage that haven't gotten much use over the decades, unless you toss them in the SUV to drive your kids to the park and ride. I wish, in their wisdom, the town had dusted off that Bicycle Master Plan, cracked its cover, and brought to us today the first piece of that visionary plan, well circulated in advance. But this is what we've got. A proposal to do a feasibility study in Old Greenwich about making it easier to bicycle in that community. And for $24,000, Old Greenwich is probably a good place to start. Oh, and there's this. Today's town leaders don't know this, but if they do open up that old Bicycle Master Plan, they'll find that back then, it proposed a pilot project. In Old Greenwich, it included detailed lane striping and a signage plan. It was estimated to cost under $20,000.
Thank you. Bob D'Angelo to be followed by Rachel Conna.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Bob D'Angelo, a member of the Active Transportation Task Force with Vin DeMarco and others, and a guy who truly loves to to ride bikes and sharing it with others, especially young people. Born and raised in Greenwich in the 1960s, we rode our bikes all over town to the beaches, the parks, the people's houses, community fields, to play ball. It was a sense of independence and sheer fun. Kids really yearn for independence and sheer fun. The roads and layouts are the very same today that they were in the 60s, but now much more dangerous to pedestrians and cyclists and all users. More cars, faster cars, bigger cars, and distracted driving make it truly dangerous for all users. Our town must play a role in planning, creating safe active transportation for all users. We had a public safety forum on October 2nd in Town Hall. Good group of residents vocalized very strong demand for safer, safer Greenwich for users and want a commitment from the town itself. This Trail Grant feasibility study is a fantastic catalyst opportunity, not just for Old Greenwich, but for all the residents here to work together and come up with some measures to make things safer here. It's really not just about an eight-foot-wide asphalt path. It's about changing a paradigm, culture of sharing roads together. Last week at one of the RTM meetings, a woman asked a question, what do we really get from this? And I answered her question, safer Greenwich for all users, a healthier Greenwich, smarter Greenwich, and an economically vibrant Greenwich. Please support this grant. Together, we can learn great things with this feasibility study and enact great measures for the safety of all. We can do this. Let's get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Conna to be followed by Hector Arzeno. Is Rachel Conna here? Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Conna. I'm the State Representative for the 149th District of Connecticut, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Greenwich. In May, Governor Ned Lamont announced a grant of $270,400 from the state's recreational trails program for planning and design work on a two-and-a-half-mile multi-use trail, which will run from Binny Park up to Bucuzee Park in southwest Stamford. Increasing opportunities for people to safely travel short distances without having to use a car is very important, but this is also about meeting our clean energy and zero-carbon goals and doing so in a fun way. And as a biker, runner, and hiker, I'm so excited that I and other residents of Greenwich will have more opportunities to be outdoors through this initiative. I want to stress that the item you are voting on today is a feasibility study for the project, and I want to add that Greenwich will get reimbursed for $270,400 of the upfront outlay by the state, and the balance will be split with Stamford. In addition, design fees are for the purpose of identifying the best path and will include consultation with the community. I hope the RTM will vote to approve the funds so we can design the trail and start making our town friendlier and safer to cyclists and pedestrians alike. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hector Arzeno to be followed for our final speaker on the side of Allie Giorsci.
Hello again. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I write to speak in favor of the appropriation for the visibility and design of the Greenwich at the Stamford Multi-Use Trail Segment. The total cost of this study for Greenwich will be $24,400 after the state reimbursement and the share that will be paid by Stamford. This trail segment is only a small part of the East Coast Greenway that will be running from Florida to Maine. Certainly, as part of this feasibility study, we will have to incorporate the comments that we will be receiving in public hearings. I think it is a good opportunity to show our state government and agencies that we in Greenwich can study and discuss these grants given to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Allie Giorsci, she may, oh, you're here, not online.
Good evening. So I want to remind us of the spirit and vision of this multi-use path. In May of 2023, our governor and town officials from Stamford and Greenwich gathered in Binny Park to celebrate the prospect of this multi-use path. A bureau chief at Connecticut DEEP said that this year DEEP received a record of 105 proposals for trail grants, the most ever, and that Greenwich and that the Greenwich and Stamford proposal had been highly ranked and recommended for funding by the Connecticut Greenways Council, as Ben alluded to this evening. The governor said the trail program was a good way to interconnect towns and cities to each other and the outdoor, and to outdoor recreational spaces. We are one state, and the paths like this remind us that Greenwich and Stamford are one region, opening up the state and making sure that everybody from every single zip code has access to what makes the state so beautiful. Our first selectman said he was proud that in Greenwich there was focus on pedestrian safety, active lifestyles, adding trails and bike routes. Representative Matt Blumenthal, who attended Old Greenwich School as a child, said, "No town is an island." Today is a very literal and symbolic recognition to the connection that our communities have to one another. Mayor Simons from Stamford said, "This project is a great example of the ways we can collaborate between our cities and towns to promote more equity, pedestrian friendliness, and more access to quality parks and open space." So granted, this trail might not be feasible, and maybe it's the not best, you know, maybe it's not the best spot, and clearly, the process of this study goes beyond a two-mile path. And as the young gentleman from Greenwich Country Day eloquently said, "This is about shifting mindset and culture. This is about connecting land and people and shared resources, and I hope you'll all give this project a chance to be explored." Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker list for item 11, and now we're going to move on to the second of the combined items, which is item number 12. Michael Kislock, are you offering that resolution? Who's offering that? Who is offering that? Oh, there you are.
Hello again, everybody. Item number 12. Resolved that the Personal Service Agreement between the Town of Greenwich, Connecticut, and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, allowing for the Town of Greenwich to receive grant funding for the planning and design of the Greenwich-Stanford Multi-Use Path, is hereby approved, and the First Selectman and/or Commissioner of Public Works are hereby authorized to execute such agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? I know Kip Bergweger's committee, Legislative I know Kip Bergweger's Committee Legislative Rules is the only one that would be new to 12. Everyone else considered 11, so I'll let him go first, just so that we can hear LNR's report, and then if anyone wants to add to their previous report, they're welcome to
Thank you, Madam Moderator. All members, guests. The Legislative Rules Committee met last Monday evening. We had Gabriella Sarcastokoi, Chief Engineer at the Department of Public Works, Michael Kislak, a civil engineer, Karen Fassoliotis, the head of the BET Law Committee, and Lauren McGee, Assistant Town Attorney. The representatives of the DPW reviewed the design project for this multi-use path. They used the same maps that it submitted to the state, which linked the sites in Old Greenwich and Stanford. The joint application successfully ordered up the $270,400 from Connecticut DEEP, which would cover 80% of the estimated $338,000 planning and design costs, and the remaining 20%, about $67,600 of estimated costs, will come from pro-rata contributions from Greenwich and Stanford. And Greenwich would be responsible for about 70% of this cost based on its pro-rata share and will be the lead on the project. Mr. Kislak explained that the original proposed route was planned to go along Sound Beach Avenue, as has been discussed extensively, but when we presented the map, it was one that showed that route and at least two others, because we were not... This is not a commitment to a particular route. It is a feasibility study. So the map showed several different routes, and there would be six... We did talk about them being eight to 10 feet wide and could take existing sidewalks and widen them. Ms. Fassoliotis noted that the BET had only seen the Sound Beach Avenue route, wanted to approve the design project. The representative from District 6 asked if there are any plans to use eminent domain as part of this project and was told no. She then asked if there are any plans to change traffic patterns and was told that there were not. She further asked if there are opportunities for public involvement and comment, and it was noted that once the design had been approved, there would be extensive public involvement and comment. The delegate from District 11 asked why this project should be done in conjunction with Stanford and was told that the town saw this as a good opportunity to collaborate. The project was jointly submitted to the Connecticut DEEP and had a much better chance of having... receiving favorable consideration by combining the two towns. And as noted, this would be a part of the East Coast Greenway. The risk management manager had projected an annual insurance premium of only $250, and Ms. McGee explained that's because it's only covering contingencies during a design period, not construction. Our vote on legal order and on the merits was 9-0-1, with District 6 abstaining due to concerns about potential impacts of the project on Old Greenwich. District 6, 3, and 10 were absent.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Peter Berg, Brooks Harris? Peter Berg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
So the Land Use Committee took up 11 and 12 together, and we did not take a separate vote. Our vote on the combined item was four in favor, three opposed, four abstention.
Thank you. Finance?
Our report was also combined, and our vote was five in favor, six opposed, one abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Lebalba, Parks and Rec.
We as well took a combined vote. The only item to add was that it was noted that $16,850 was... as part of the monies was assigned to public meetings, outreach materials, coordination, and public input. The vote was 8-4-0.
Thank you. Transportation, Anthony Moore.
We did not discuss the Item 12 separately, but we did hold a separate vote on this. As the previous vote, the vote was 8, 1, 0 in favor. Districts 5, 9, and 11 were absent. District 6 was the sole nay vote.
Thank you. Craig Ammison, Public Works Committee.
Hi, good evening. Because Item 11 failed in our vote, we did not take up Item 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, VOC. Do you have nothing else to add? Okay. Let's go to the debate on Item 12. There are a few people that have signed up. Anthony Moore, Transportation. You want to pass. Bob DiAngelo. Is he still here? Okay. Ali Giorsey.
Sorry, I thought I signed up for 11, but I'm going to pivot a little bit because Number 12 is about, you know, the agreement between us and Stanford, and I just want to express how strongly I feel that connecting our towns and connecting our neighborhoods is really important, and doing that with a bicycle route is very important. Long ago, when I lived in Manhattan, I twice attempted to complete what's called the Great Sauter, a 30-mile walk around the outside of Manhattan. The first time I did it, we climbed... We walked over the Amtrak rails illegally. We did all sorts of horrifying things, ran across the FDR. That was exciting. The next time we did it, we explored neighborhoods that we had never been to before, because the path... Little bits and pieces of paths came together, and now you can get almost all the way around Manhattan by foot on the waterfront, which is really cool. We can... This town is very averse to change. I understand that. I also understand the frustrations with our capital planning process and agree that we need to do better on that front and include the community on these things. But I do want to just say that, you know, if you're frustrated by traffic, if you are concerned about letting your kids walk to school, if you are sick and tired of not finding a parking space, this is one of the solutions that we have for us. Let's explore our town. Let's explore our neighborhoods. Let's explore Stanford, and that area of town and Stanford is actually changing quite a bit. I'm sure there will be lovely restaurants. There will be a skating rink over there at some point soon. So, and commuting that way also. A lot of people work over there. So please consider supporting this. It's a feasibility study. We're not committed to actually building anything yet. We will have other meetings in the future about it. We won't spend any money until this body approves it, so that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Craig, could you please prepare the voting window? So this is the vote on Combined Calendar Items 11 and 12, which are the Greenwich-Stanford Okay. Combined Calendar Items 11 and 12, Greenwich-Stanford Multi-Use Trail. If you are in favor of those items, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the vote window? Okay. You should be able to go. You'll have two minutes to vote. We're going to close the vote window. Okay. I have the result of the Combined Calendar Items 11 and 12. Those in favor, 107; opposed, 71; abstaining, 8. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? That now brings us to the first of our separate items, Item 1. Before we launch into the main event, I just want to say a couple of things. Item 1 is the second read of a proposed amendment to the noise ordinance to regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. I realize that from the time the RTM first considered this item in October to this evening, the circumstances have changed considerably. So I would like to provide everyone with an overview of what some of our options are strictly from a parliamentary perspective. I'm not offering you any opinion on what the membership to do, what they should do. I just want to offer what the process could look like. Item 1 proposes to amend Chapter 6B in the town code or the noise ordinance. On Thursday, December 7, the Greenwich Board of Health voted to repeal the noise ordinance and declared that the BOH and the Department of Health will no longer be involved in the management of noise activity in the community. The BOH further explained that the CT State DEEP noise regulation will serve as the regulatory law until such time that Greenwich adopts its own noise ordinance. Where does that leave Item 1? Because this item is a second read, it has already been accepted and is before the RTM for consideration. However, because Item 1 is a proposed amendment to what is now a repealed noise ordinance, if the RTM elects to take further action on this item, a subsidiary motion will need to be utilized. Subsidiary motions are motions that are directed at the main motion, in this case, Item 1, and they are considered in ranking order. That order is the following: postpone to a certain time, so in this case postponed to January 2024; refer, in this case, District 9's motion to refer to a special committee; amend or postpone indefinitely. So the first motion we would consider is a motion to postpone to January 2024. A motion to postpone to a certain time places the item on the call in the exact format it currently appears on the call. It basically keeps things static. So you might ask, why would the RTM want to consider this option? Because it allows the RTM and town officials an additional month to research and explore all of the options available in light of the decision that the Board of Health made. If this motion passes, we will be done with the item for the evening. If the motion fails, we would then take up the District 9 motion to refer the item to a special committee with instructions to report back in June 2024. That special committee would likely then have to rework the entire proposed ordinance because instead of coming as an amendment, it would need to draft something and bring it forward in June. If that motion passes, that would be done. If it fails, we would move on to the proposed amendments. And then, truthfully, I think it would be very difficult for us to seriously consider some of the motions to amend from the floor this evening, given that the noise ordinance was repealed, and so on, until we reach the final subsidiary motion, which would apply to this item, which is the motion to postpone indefinitely, which would effectively kill it. And finally, and crucially, Quiet Yards of Greenwich intends to place on the call in January a standalone ordinance, not tethered to any other ordinance, even if the town enacts a new noise ordinance, to regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. So regardless of what the RTM decides to do with Item 1 this evening, next month, there will be a standalone ordinance to regulate the use of gas blowers... gas leaf blowers on the call. At this time, I would like to call for the committee reports from the committees that considered this item, and I recognize that the committees considered this item prior to the Board of Health's decision, which may make much of what you are about to say irrelevant. I'm sorry, there's a question. Yes. Yes. Why don't you come to the podium so everybody can hear you?
Hi, I'm Donna Gadioso from District 9. District 9 wants to make a motion, but you're saying that the first motion has to proceed.
So there's a ranking order. The first motion that we are going to consider in ranking order is the motion to postpone. If that passes, we will take up no further motions on this item. If that fails, we would then consider the next motion, which is a motion to refer to a committee on behalf of District 9.
Okay.
So they're ranked. Right. Okay. So who would like to go first with their committee report? We have a number of reports. Who's going first? Don't all rush at once. Point of information, Mr. Mescars.
I think that hearing... That's a great idea. I think that if the body agrees with that, I think it's somewhat unusual to hear committee reports for something that is really no longer applicable, but... Okay? Would people be amenable to that? Can we... Okay. Okay. So we're gonna do not get used to this. I hope that this procedurally does not become a way of weaseling out of giving committee reports, but we are going to first hear the motion to postpone, and that motion needs to be offered by someone. Scoot away, Mr. Berg. We're not doing committee reports now.
No, I hear you. Who's gonna...
Not you. So, Mr. Berg, scoot away. Ms. McWiggin, Janet Stone McWiggin is offering that report. I mean, offering that motion.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Janet Stone McWiggin. I'm a Greenwich Select person, and I offer the motion to postpone this item until the January 2024 meeting.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Debate on the motion. I think Ms. Rabin and Ms. Stone McWiggin wanted to give... to show their unity of support for this postponement, a joint delivery.
Okay. Lauren Rabin, Select Woman. Item 1, a proposed amendment to the noise ordinance that would limit summertime use of gas-powered leaf blowers is a matter of great interest to the residents of our town. This is the second read, and many people have spent a large amount of time, including our Land Use, Health and Human Services, and Legislative and Rules Committees. However, as of today, December 11, the Town of Greenwich does not have a noise ordinance to amend. At 12:01 this morning, the Board of Health's decision to repeal the entire noise ordinance went into effect. This action was taken by the Board of went into effect. This action was taken by the Board of Health on Thursday without consulting with the Office of the Selectmen or members of the RTM. The action is unprecedented, and the town's legal department and government officials are still working to understand the full magnitude of its consequences. The motion tonight to suspend this until the January meeting of the RTM, this will give town officials and the RTM time to better understand the legal framework that we are now operating in, and in regards to noise in general and in regard to leaf blower use specifically. We hope that you will vote in favor of this motion so that we can move forward in an intentional and thoughtful manner in order to best represent our constituents.
Okay, we have a few more speakers. Dan, could you get the two-minute clock up for everybody after, coming after? Myra Clockenbrink is our next speaker, to be followed by Stephen Meskers.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, members and friends. Given everything that has transpired in the last few days, the bewildering withdrawal of the town noise ordinance, and the first selectman's call for the Director of the Board of Health to resign, it behooves this body to wait until the dust settles, and we have a clear understanding of the legal ramifications of these decisions. We are not in a position to vote because we don't have a noise ordinance to amend, and we need to make sure whatever we vote on is in legal order. We need time to understand our current legal environment. We also need to get back to the business of improving the lives of Greenwich residents and to proceed with the facts and with competent leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Meskers to be followed by Sophie Koven. So that would be a pass. Sophie Koven to be followed by Ali Giorsi.
Thank you. I could say a week ago, I was really looking forward to having a vote tonight, but we all recognize with Quiet Yards that it would not be appropriate to have a vote tonight, given the new legal situation that we have in the town, and we are in favor of postponing till January. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Giorsi to be followed by, Ali Giorsi's passing. Lucy von Brockel to be followed by Elizabeth Dempsey.
All right. So I feel pretty strongly that the RTM has some, should have had some authority here, and I'm very upset that we had all, we spent a lot of time on this, a lot of time discussing it. We heard from more people via email and at our meetings than I think we ever have. And I'm very upset that this was, the rug was kind of pulled out from under us in making this decision because we represent the entire community, whereas the Board of Health is an appointed body of seven people, and they didn't really even notice this meeting with more than 28 hours' notice. And I also personally am not entirely sure that the Board of Health really had the authority to do it this way. There are parts of our, there's in our preface to the town charter, there's mention of the RTM adopting Board of Health ordinances. There's mentions elsewhere, and I really do believe that it's important to postpone this rather than send this to a committee right now so that we have time to sort out what our options are before we waste anyone else's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dempsey. I think Scott Calbas left, but he, well, we have two speakers left, so in deference to them, we'll do that.
Hi, Elizabeth Dempsey, Quiet Yards Greenwich. I'll pass on, for time purposes, but I second all that has been said, and especially by Sophie. Thank you.
Lyndy Lillian is our final speaker. Okay, that concludes, yes, Ms... No. If you, if this passes, it concludes, it sends the item to January 2024. This is the first, this is the first ranking motion. If it passes, we are done. If it does not pass, we will take up the District 9 motion to refer. But if this passes, we are done with item one for the evening. No, 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 no. Item one is before us. We are postponing this to January 2024 if this motion passes, okay? Your motion to refer to a special committee, the motion to refer itself is a lower priority motion. It can't jump ahead of the line. If this motion passes, we are done. Her motion, I can tell you, the District 9 motion is to refer item one to a special committee comprised of, I believe it's representatives from the standing committees that referred, that were referred this item, to report back in June of 2024. Yes. Okay, what has it been changed to? But, you know, I don't want to get into that, though, because that's irrelevant. We have to, we have to do the motion to postpone. We've, no, no, we're gonna, we're gonna proceed with the vote at this point on the motion to postpone. If you do not want to vote on the motion to postpone because you are enticed or believe that a motion to refer is a better option, you are free to vote no on the motion to postpone. If you would like, if you support the motion to postpone, you would vote yes. You have a choice because you know what is following this, okay? So Craig, could you please put up the slide? The McWiggin motion to postpone item one to January 2024. If you are in favor of this motion, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to this motion, you would vote no. If you, if you want to, if you believe that the body should take up the District 9 motion after this, you would want to vote no. So you have the opportunity to consider that, okay? But this is your first, I'm sorry. Kathy Steele. Right. So my guess is, is that if this gets postponed and the Quiet Yards Greenwich resolution is on the call, then after one month of this being static, I'm assuming that someone will come and say, we have no noise ordinance, we can't move this forward, we're going to pivot to the standalone ordinance, and what I would then expect at that, at that meeting would likely be, we have to still get it off the board, we have to dispose of it, so like a motion to kill it, like a motion to postpone indefinitely. It's hard to know, of course, what would happen, but, you know, that might be one option. Okay. So if we could open the vote on the McWiggin motion to postpone item one to January 2024? The vote is open. If you could please cast your, your vote now. You have two minutes to do so. You have about 30 seconds to vote. I recommend that you do so now. Sorry. Has everyone voted that wants to vote? Okay, I'm going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. The vote on the McWiggin motion to postpone item one to the January 2024 meeting, those in favor, 141. Opposed, 50. Abstaining, 1. That motion has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. What that effectively does is it disposes with item one for this evening. That item will appear on the call as it currently exists in January 2024, and I've been advised by Quiet Yards of Greenwich that they are also submitting, and I did receive a copy of it, so I have every reason to believe that they will get it in by next Friday, a new standalone ordinance directed at the restriction of gas-powered leaf blowers. Okay? So that brings us to our second item on the separate calendar. Let's find out what that is, because I don't remember offhand. I think it's item seven. It's the postponement, six, the postponement of Mr. Perry, maybe, right? Okay. Okay, Mr., can we have that, somebody needs to offer the motion, though. Who is offering the motion on Mr. Perry? Do we have a select person here who could offer the motion on Mr. Perry? Ms. Raven, could you offer the motion on Mark Perry, please? Item six. This is actually for the purpose of postponing.
Yes, yes, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring October 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Mr. Berg?
So Mr. Perry was unable to attend our meeting because he was ill. The Land Use Committee voted to postpone this item until January, and that was unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. McKnight, you had a report. Do you want to waive your report? Okay. So the, would you, did you offer, Mr. Berg, did you offer your motion to postpone? Could you just offer that briefly?
So the Land Use Committee adopted a motion to postpone Mr. Perry until our January meeting.
Thank you. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Any debate on the motion? No. It's procedural in nature. We can adopt it by a voice vote or upon unanimous consent. Is there anyone who is objecting to postponing item seven, Mr. Perry, to January 2024? I'm sorry, item six, sorry, to January 2024? No objection? That motion has been adopted upon unanimous consent. That brings us to item nine on the separate calendar, which is the harbor management mooring fees. Is someone here to offer that resolution? Ms. Raven, could you please read the resolution on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the Harbor Management Commission? Item nine, please.
Okay, thank you. Janet was going to do that, sorry. Okay. Resolve that the yearly mooring fee for the town of Greenwich Harbor area be increased from $75 to $100 for the 2024 boating season.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the committee reports from the committees that considered this, beginning with Peter Berg of our Land Use Committee?
Good evening again. So the Land Use Committee made a concerted effort to have someone from the Harbor Management Commission come to our meeting and explain this item. Nobody appeared, so we moved to postpone this item to January.
Okay, thank you. May we have the report of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Catherine Lebalbo?
Good evening. Park and Recreation has the benefit of having a number of voters and, you know, a number of conversations with the Harbor Management Commission. So the committee felt pretty confident as they reviewed this item, and we voted for it 12-0-0. The consensus was that this was welcomed and an accepted increase to make our harbors and waterways safer and a good investment for the additional $25 or the increase of $25 on the fee. So again, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Brooks Harris, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Thank you. There were two elements of this we considered. The first was whether the fee was out of line with other towns in the area, and obviously, it's not. I mean, if you look at the data, it's still pretty low at $100. But the second item that we had wanted to address was what the money is going to be used for. And unfortunately, we didn't have any representation from the Harbor Management Commission, so we were not able to determine why the extra money was needed. As a result, most people abstained on this, and the vote was, the vote failed. We rejected this 0-3-7 with two absent. Thank you.
Mr. Berg, would you like to now offer your motion to postpone item number nine?
So the Land Use Committee adopted a motion to postpone this item to January 2024.
Thank you. That offer, that motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Debate on the land use motion to postpone item nine. We do have a few people who have signed up. I don't know if they're here or in Zoom land. Jason Halio? Is he here? Oh, Lyle Gibbons. I see Lyle Gibbons. Lyle Gibbons.
I'm Lyle Gibbons. I'm the Secretary of the Harbor Management Commission. I've also been on this commission since its inception in 2014. I apologize to the committees that Mr. Halio was not there. He's new to the commission. I don't think anybody's quite understood that he was supposed to come before the committees. The point person in the selectman's office was Ken Borsec, and I know one of the committee chairs reached out to him, and everybody seemed to feel that the answers, the questions had been answered. I spoke with the Chairman of the Finance Committee earlier today, and he indicated that the main reasons that the Finance Committee was concerned about this proposal is they wanted to have more detail as to how the increased revenues would be spent. Therefore, let me tell you a little bit about this, the, what the increase in revenues will be. It's about $11,000. But our budget is very lean. The only revenues, only money we get in revenues are from mooring fees, which have not been increased since 2013. Our temporary administrative lines and temporary help have increased greatly, especially over the past couple of years. We now have a better handle on how many moorings we have in the Greenwich Harbor, which is some over 800 moorings. When the Harbor Commission was started in 2014, we really had no idea how many moorings there were. We thought it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 500, and we did not have an accurate count of who these moorings belong to or any of the data as to what kind of vessels were at the moorings or what was happening with them. We now have that under control. We have a much better online mooring system. We have a very effective harbor master who goes out to check the moorings on a daily, if not if not weekly, basis during the mooring season, and we seem to, we do know where the moorings are. We've also, this past year got, I guess, within almost 100%, I'd say 95% accountability of people paying their mooring fees and back mooring fees from before. That being said, we still have not had, well, we're trying to balance our budget with picking into account the increased administrative costs. And the other big driver for the need to increase our mooring fees is there's some 50 abandoned moorings in the Greenwich harbors. We really need to pull those old abandoned anchors and get them out because they're a danger both to safety of boats and safety and to the danger if anybody happened to be swimming. It costs well over $100, maybe $200 to pull each mooring. We, if we have the increased fees, we can have the harbor master do that. He's indemnified by the state, so it's no additional cost to the town if anything goes wrong. I don't think we'll be able to pull all the moorings within this first boating season. It's a long, lengthy process to try and identify who owns the moorings, and we have to send out special letters and try and get some handle as to whom they belong to, but we're going to start the process this summer. We don't anticipate having to increase the mooring fees again for quite some time, so I am here to ask you to vote in favor of the increase of mooring fees. Thank you.
We're discussing the motion to postpone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was the item itself. Well, that's the reason why I don't want to postpone, but, okay.
Thank you. We have two more speakers signed up. Janet Stowe-McWiggin to be followed by Valerie Stauffer.
Thank you. Well, the same, same question. Can I, can I make an argument to go ahead and vote in favor of the mooring fee at this time?
No, you just want to discuss why you wouldn't want it postponed or want it postponed, whatever your position is.
Well, I defer to the, to the members on that question, and if we do take it up, then I will, I will speak in favor. Thank you.
Valerie Stauffer.
I'm a member of RTM District 7, but I'm speaking tonight as the SNAC representative liaison with the Harbor Management, that's the Selectmen's Nominating Advisory Committee. As far as postponing, it's very important that we do pass this increase tonight because the, the bills are going out to the people with the moorings, and so it's important, really, to get this decided tonight, and if we can vote not to postpone it, then I can come back and tell you why you should vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker list for people who would like to postpone it. So Craig, can you please prepare the window, the voting window? This would be the item nine, land use motion to postpone to January 2024. Okay? If you are in favor of postponing this item, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Could you please start the clock? Yep. You have two minutes to cast your vote. You have about 30 seconds before the window closes. Craig, could you please close the voting window? Okay, I have the vote on the motion to postpone the item to January 2024. Those in favor, 48, opposed 121, abstaining one, that motion has failed. Craig, can you please show the vote? Okay, so that now brings us to the merits of item number nine. Is there anyone that wants to, is there anyone that wants, Mr. Berg, you would like to be acknowledged for the merits of item number nine? You have two minutes.
So we were told that once upon a time, the commission charged much higher fees and as a result accumulated a very large sum, which is held by the Board of Selectmen, several hundred thousand dollars. We, if that's the case, we don't understand why would we be increasing fees when they've got this pot of money.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lyle Gibbons to be followed by Janet Stowe-McWiggin and Valerie Stauffer in that order.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I can respond to that if I may, please. I think it was back in 2010 or 11 that the Selectmen felt that the harbor fees were much too low, and at that point, there was no big handle on how many boats were actually moored in the, in the Greenwich Harbor areas or exactly what the fee should be. So they required everybody to pay $150 one-time fee in addition to the yearly fee. They took in some $250,000 to $275,000 on this, and there were so much protest. And the, the point of charging the $150 fee was to have some sort of a safety net for when we were going to dredge both the Myoness River and the Greenwich Harbor. As it turned out, dredging, dredging the Greenwich Harbor, I mean, the Myoness River cost much more than that, and it was paid for by state funds, and dredging Greenwich Harbor is going to be in the millions of dollars, and we have no idea at this stage exactly how much it's going to be. This money is held in a capital account. It is not used for operating expenses, and the one time that our expenses exceeded our budget, we had to go back through the Board of Selectmen and the BET to request withdrawing some money from those funds to go uncover our, our budget. We are trying to have an operating budget that operates on the annual revenues and not have to go back to this other fund, which at today, I think is around $300,000, and it is there for emergency purposes. It would be something that you all would vote on, it would be an emergency fund for something big, much bigger. It is not an annual operating fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Stowe-McWiggin to be followed by Valerie Stauffer, our final speaker.
So, thank you for this opportunity to speak in favor of this item. Again, apologies to the committees. We've, we've learned our lesson here. I am the liaison from the Board of Selectmen to the Harbor Management Commission. There's not a whole lot to add. The Honorable Lyle Gibbons has been very, very articulate about how we got, how the commission got to this proposal. I'll just reiterate that it's been well over 10 years since these fees have been raised. The commission did look very extensively at neighboring communities and concluded that this, this increase would put us more in line with those other communities and for their, that, yes, that these additional fees would be used to make our harbors safer, that they would address abandoned moorings. So thank you very much. Please vote in favor of this item.
Thank you. Valerie Stauffer, our final speaker on this item.
Thank you for voting to take it up tonight because it is important, and I'll just reiterate that the fee was as high as $100 a few years ago, so we are just bringing it back, and for safety purposes, we want to get rid of moorings that are under the water for safety for everyone in the harbor. So please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now call for a vote on the item. Craig, can you prepare the, the voting window? Item nine is to approve new mooring fee, $100 for the 2024 boating season. If you're in favor of this item, increasing the fee, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, can you please open the two-minute window? You have two minutes to vote. You have about 30 seconds before the window closes. Okay, the window is closed. Craig, could you please close the voting window? Okay, I have the vote on item nine. Those in favor, 163, opposed six, abstaining zero, that item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That now brings us to item 13. May we have the resolution for item 13? Who's reading item 13? Is there someone from the Board of Education that is reading item 13 here or the Greenwich? Am I just reading the? You are just reading the resolution, yep. Then I have to pull it up, so I apologize. Where'd it go? Perfect, thank you. Uh, yes, so it was resolved that the sum of $3,200,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated for the Hamilton Avenue HVAC replacement project and to be added to the following accounts to be determined by the comptroller. Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption? Okay, the resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees and the district that considered this item, beginning with Kimberly Blank of the Education Committee?
Thank you. Item 13 is a request for a $3.2 million appropriation for an HVAC replacement project at Hamilton Avenue School. Dr. Tony Jones, Superintendent of Schools, and Dan Watson, Director of Facilities, presented this item to us. Leslie Moriarty of the BET was also available to answer questions. Mr. Watson explained that the original geothermal system installed as part of the 2009 building project has never worked properly, either due to poor design and installation and/or problems with maintenance. There was also a conventional secondary system which the school has primarily relied on. Since this backup system wasn't designed to run the full system, it became overtaxed and has now failed. In August, classroom temperatures were over 80 degrees. The district has rented equipment to run the system at a cost of $20,000 per month. They will need to continue this until a new system is in place. Greenwich Public Schools requested $2.2 million for this replacement project as part of the regular budget process. That request was turned down, but they were encouraged to come back for an interim appropriation once they had plans for a replacement system. While they still haven't chosen a replacement system, they want to install one that is similar to other schools so that the maintenance staff is familiar with it. They have chosen not to replace this system with another geothermal system, but to go with a conventional system. In consulting with EMAC, they asked a company called Farnsworth from Colorado to review whether they could replace parts of the existing system to use the existing wells and install a geothermal or hybrid system. They have recently received Farnsworth's report, which says that they believe this can be done for a similar capital cost to a conventional system. Mr. Watson said they don't believe it's in the district's best interest to move forward with a geothermal system. He said that he has a staff of eight people to maintain all of the public school facilities and two are certified HVAC mechanics. Given the particularities of a geothermal system and turnover in the positions, it's not easy to properly train and maintain in-house expertise for these systems. They said that it is difficult to find contractors to maintain this system as geothermal is not widely used in the area, especially for non-residential buildings. The committee asked if Greenwich Public Schools had done a detailed comparison of total costs for a conventional versus a geothermal or hybrid system, including installation, maintenance, and ongoing utility costs. Mr. Watson told us that they have not. They have just received the Farnsworth cost estimate and have not gotten an estimate for a geothermal system from a local contractor. Mr. Watson said that he is not sure that Farnsworth's view that the cost would be similar to a conventional system takes into account local labor conditions since they are located in Colorado. We asked what would happen if we postponed this item until we were able to do a detailed comparison. Mr. Watson and Dr. Jones explained that we would miss the opportunity to apply for a $400,000 HVAC grant from the state since there is a December 31 deadline for these applications. Mr. Watson also said that he's concerned that pushing the decision further out makes it hard to complete the work over the summer, leading to greater rental costs if this continues into next year. We discussed what would happen to the current geothermal system. Mr. Watson said the current recommendation is to decommission and fill the wells so they do not develop leaks. Members of the committee asked whether we could leave the existing wells in place for a time when a geothermal system might become easier to maintain. He said that it's not recommended. The delegate from District 8 made a motion to postpone this item to our January meeting in order to give the schools time to provide a detailed analysis of the total cost of geothermal versus conventional systems. Those in favor of postponing felt that we need to consider the total costs, including natural gas costs rather than just the installation costs. They are concerned about the environmental impact of a conventional system and feel that it is a step backwards to move away from a geothermal system. They believe that some of the maintenance issues can be alleviated by entering into an external maintenance contract, better training for public school employees, or the addition of GPS maintenance employees. better training for public school employees, or the addition of GPS maintenance employees. They cited the importance of modeling environmentally sound behavior for our students. They were concerned about spending money to decommission the wells that are part of the system rather than leaving them in place to be used in the future. Those opposed to the motion to postpone were concerned that we will miss the opportunity to receive state grant funding and that the project could be delayed from being completed this summer. They recognized that this is the only only building in town with a geothermal system and do not believe that schools should bear disproportionate responsibility for advancing environmental policies. They believe that the school district's primary function is education and don't expect them to have a particular competency in managing new HVAC technologies. They understand Mr. Watson's belief that the district does not have the capacity to properly manage such a system with a limited staff. We voted 7-5-0 in favor of the motion to postpone. Districts Three, Four, Five, Six, Eight, Nine, and Twelve voted in favor. Districts One, Two, Seven, Ten, and Eleven were opposed. We then took up the item as presented in the call. We did this in order to be able to offer an advisory view from the committee should the motion to postpone fail. We voted 6-4-2 in favor of the item. Districts One, Two, Three, Seven, Ten, and Eleven voted in favor. Districts Six, Eight, Nine, and Twelve were opposed. Districts Four and Five abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks Harris with the Finance Committee report.
Hello. Finance took up items 13 and 14 together initially. As mentioned, item 13 is a request of funding of $3.2 million. Of that, $600,000 is comprised of $200,000 for A&E and approximately $400,000 for temporary HVAC while the new system is being implemented. We had Blaze Levitan and Karen Kowalski attending our meeting. School officials reported that a new system was needed because the existing system is completely shot. Just before school opened, the temperature could not be brought below the high 80s. Mr. Levitan indicated that the system was not designed properly and there had been problems going back to 2009. We had sued the builder for this issue and others relating to mistakes in design and construction. Finance discussed the letter sent from Dan Watson highlighting the difficulties the school have maintaining geothermal systems and that Hamilton Avenue was the only geothermal system being maintained by the schools. The letter indicated that they were not able to manage such a system with their current headcount and expertise and strongly recommended implementing a conventional HVAC system. In an effort to examine the option of rehabilitating the existing geothermal system, the schools reached out to the Energy Management Advisory Committee, who recommended we engage Brightcore Energy. Brightcore had Brightcore has done some work in the area, including for Brunswick School. Not even with the geothermal wells intact could Brightcore comment on the ability to replace the system. They said they couldn't help replace it or enter into a power purchasing agreement. But they did give us the name of a consulting firm in Colorado, Farnsworth. As reported, Farnsworth evaluated three alternatives: one, to use the existing geothermal system and try and get it working again; two, scrap that and go to a more conventional HVAC system; and three, attempt to retrofit the geothermal system. Sadly, the report did not do an economic analysis to show which system would be most economical. While we have the estimated cost of the new HVAC and estimated cost for retrofitting the existing system, we don't have the operating data needed to judge the economics of these two comparative projects. A member maintained that perhaps the savings on fuel would tip the scales in favor of geothermal, particularly because the main cost of geothermal, which is boring the wells, had already had already been invested and the wells themselves were still operable. Another member noted Mr. Watson indicated we did not have the expertise to manage the geothermal system. It may have to hire someone whose cost could tip the analysis in favor of a conventional system. After an initial vote where Finance narrowly rejected this appropriation because we couldn't differentiate economically between the two proposals, Mr. Blaze requested if we could revote and retain the portion of the appropriation which could fund temporary HVAC. A motion was made to reconsider, which passed, so we voted. And instead of voting no on this, we moved to amend this and reduce the amount ultimately to $411,000, the amount needed for one year of temporary HVAC. I guess I'll make that motion if it comes in order.
At the appropriate time.
At the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, Craig Emmetson?
Madam Moderator, members and guests, we took up this item also a week ago. And not to repeat everything that's been said, but some of the things that have not been said that did come up in our meeting is that in reading the report, you know, people talk about how this geothermal system, which was put in place in 2009, was not put in properly. That's not what we read in this report. We also did not read from Farnsworth that they did not, we did not read that they thought we should not try and repair. That, in fact, was the recommendation, was to try and try and get the system back up to speed. It has been declining for some period of time and finally totally failed in August 2023. So, as as was already said, for the air conditioning, they, in the month of August, they were unable to get the temperature in the building down below 86 degrees. So, they swiftly put in some temporary equipment, which we rent, and that's what that $400,000 figure is for the course of the year. I guess when we went through everything, our takeaway was that we kind of did this to ourselves. We put in a system in 2009 that was advanced. And yes, it was the only geothermal system put into any, not only school in the town of Greenwich, but in any town-owned building in the town of Greenwich. What we found is because of our lack of familiarity with how to handle this, and truthfully, I think we should fault ourselves for not having sought out the proper advice and potentially even going into a third-party contract to oversee what we had in there because we did the damage to the system ourselves. We are at fault. The system itself could have operated very well. Part of the problem is that we would turn it off and and let the boilers take over for the heat. These systems are meant to to continually operate. And during during heating times, they force cold air down in and pick up more heated air from the ground and bring it up so that that doesn't have to be heated to the same extent. And they reverse that during the during the summer months. Now, part of the problem with this is like traditional heating systems where, you know, because of our weather here, you get to where you're, eh, it's a little chilly in the morning, so we'll turn on the heat. Well, it's not as simple as flipping a switch and turning on the heat or then turning the AC back on. But the availability of third-party maintenance agreements are out there. The fact that we only have two, my understanding, HVAC technicians handling all the schools and that this being the only one that is geothermal is a big part of our problem. We did not feel that without having cost estimates for what it would really cost to repair this, that we were in a position to to vote for this appropriation. I think it's also interesting that, you know, typically, we get interim appropriations for several hundred thousand dollars. It's kind of unusual to get an interim appropriation for 3.2 million. We made a motion to postpone this item until January. Not that we think everything could come out in January, but we didn't think we were ready to vote. That motion to postpone passed 10-0-0 with Districts Nine and Ten absent. Thank you.
Lucia Jansen with the BOC report.
The discussion was kicked off highlighting the geothermal system at Hamilton School, was installed 15 years ago and at that time was considered early adopter technology that was not widely known or implemented in the 169 school districts. It was noted the town had been, has been a traditional late adopter technology user that expects many proven mature installations of a product before purchasing and installing. Examples of poorly implemented early technology cited was the Glenville School with the solar system and the smart whiteboards that sat idle at the schools as well. A lead grant presented by the architect was the catalyst for the district to design and purchase this geothermal system at the time. The $3.2 million interim appropriation was prompted after a report was written at the bequest of the BET by geothermal experts. The report outlined the school administration at the time did a poor job in purchasing, installing, maintaining, and operating the system. Strong words were used, but the current facilities director, Dan Watson, agreed based on his own analysis and research of the historical facts. Mr. Watson cited in both Board of Ed and BET meetings four primary reasons to strongly recommend the conventional HVAC. One, again, the proven widespread HVAC technology. Two, and I think it's probably his most compelling, he wants to standardize across the district the same HVAC manufacturer, parts, and knowledge. Three, greater availability of this type of skill set. As we know, the labor market is very tight, particularly for trades personnel. The geothermal, in their estimation, will require a higher-level employee than a custodian. It will probably be a trade foreman. And three, a state ARPA grant that is immediately available, potentially available, if Greenwich Public Schools files by December 31, 2023. District Six BOC Representative Steve Meskers, who was substituting for the representative, took issue with Mr. Watson's analysis and the previous Board of Ed and BET votes. Meskers said that natural gas HVAC is going backwards and not progressive using modern renewable energy solution. Meskers felt a cost comparison was needed between a replacement geothermal system with the conventional HVAC system before a decision could be reached. He also indicated the grant needed a building committee in order to qualify for the grant. A discussion took place on these issues. Some BOC members wanted to vote after the full cost information was provided. Further, BOC members were exploring ideas to address the building committee requirement by either establishing or using an existing building committee, such as the Greenwich High School Vestibule Committee. The BOC took a vote and it, this item failed with a BOC vote of 5-6-0. District Four, Five, Six, Eight, Nine, and Twelve voted against. And the reason was more information to be asked for. We then heard tonight that there was this idea to postpone, so we wanted to also concur with the notion to receive as much complete information on this. Some of the commentary at the BOC was that there is this Energy Management Group, EMAC, that could be a resource to the Board of Ed in the analysis of understanding the comparison between the conventional HVAC and a geothermal. There was noted what was said at other meetings, which is the wells are currently in place and that this is not as cumbersome and difficult to restart. And so, we should really explore not only the difficulty, but the cost and that the full operating cost. So, this would be the total cost of ownership over the lifetime. So, the vote at that point to postpone was 11-0-0 in support of postponing this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one district report. Ms. Jenkins, are you going to offer it or is Mr. DeChamp going to offer it? Okay. Jenny Larkin, could you look for Matt DeChamp on the Zoom line?
Ask him to raise his hand.
Mr. DeChamp, could you raise your hand if you're online?
Oh, I see him. Yeah, there he is.
You're all set, Mr. DeChamp, if you would like to offer the District Six report on that item.
Well, the District Six report on the item is we'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until the January call.
Okay, great. That concludes our reports. We do have a motion to postpone from almost every committee. I think District Six was going to offer it. You've just heard him offer it. That being offered on behalf of a district does not require a second, so we will have debate on the motion to postpone. Mr. DeChamp or Mr. Aylman, I forget. Is Mr., is Javier Aylman here? You are here, sir. You are recognized as the proponent of this item, the motion to postpone. Javier Aylman, who's also on the EMAC Committee and an RTM member.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, my fellow RTM members. My name is Javier Aylman, and I am a member of District Four and serve on the Energy Management Advisory Committee, EMAC. Professionally, I'm a certified energy manager, a lead AP professional, and a principal at a company that specializes in the design, distribution, and installation of HVAC systems. I have been working in the HVAC industry close to 20 years. I urge you to postpone the vote on item 13, an interim appropriation request of $3.2 million for the HVAC system at Hamilton Avenue School. A postponement would allow for a complete and accurate accounting of the first cost of two options: a natural gas-fired HVAC system and the correction and optimization of an existing geothermal system, which, by the way, is a recommended recommendation from Farnsworth Group, the expert hired by the Board of Education. It is important that the full lifecycle cost for each option also be taken into account. This expenditure will have implications for our town's operating budget for decades. Postponing would also allow for a proper solution to be engineered before we rush into construction. As of today, there are no engineered drawings for a comprehensive solution at Hamilton Avenue. And yet, we're being asked for money to implement a solution. This approach is backwards. It's backwards regardless of which HVAC system you think is best. Additionally, ask yourselves, why are we being pushed for a rushed decision at this point in time? The issues at Hamilton Avenue did not happen a month ago. They've been known for a long time to all. Why haven't we completed any engineering? Why are we not evaluating all options? We should be evaluating a number of options, looking at the cost to install and the cost to operate over the life of the system to find the best solution for Greenwich and our kids. Moreover, given that no requisite building committee is in place and so few municipalities have received these funds last year, the prospect of receiving this grant money is a long shot. In construction, you want to measure twice and build once. In reality, you want to measure twice, have it checked twice by others, and then move on to construction. Where construction gets messy and difficult is when you try to correct issues after the fact and in the field. Having a good set of construction drawings developed and fully vetted would also give us the ability to have a solid bidding process with tons of bidders. I work in this industry and I know for a fact there's tons of people that can do this work locally. The Facilities Department has stated that they were too overwhelmed and too short-staffed to fully analyze all alternatives. EMAC has stated that we are willing to assist the BOE with analyzing and vetting the costs, the cost information on both recommended geo, both the recommended geothermal option and the natural gas option. EMAC could also help the design team review and develop comprehensive documents for bid. EMAC is a great resource for Greenwich and can add a lot of value to the process. And just one note on complexity. The only difference between a heat pump and a regular AC unit is a reversing valve. Essentially, all it does, it changes which side gets hot and which side gets cold. If somebody's telling you that it's too complicated to operate a heat pump, essentially, they're telling you it's too complicated to operate your conventional AC system. And make no mistake, when money is misspent on a bad construction job, when money is misspent on a system that results in higher operating costs, these funds are coming out of the BOE budget, which ultimately results in budget cuts elsewhere. This means less teachers and less resources for our kids. This request is a disservice to taxpayers in Greenwich. And the part that upsets me the most is that this is a huge disservice to our most important constituents, our kids. If you care about our schools, you should vote to postpone. And if you truly care about fiscal responsibility, you should vote to postpone. And if you truly care about fiscal responsibility, you should vote to postpone. Please join me in voting yes to postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative from the Board of Education who'll service the principal opponent to You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Moderator and members of the RTM. My name is Karen Hirsch, Acting Chair of the Board of Education. I'm here to speak in support of item number 13, which is, as it appears on the call, the Board of Education's request for the appropriation of $3.2 million for the Hamilton Avenue HVAC replacement. In July, the Board learned that in order for Hamilton Avenue School to open to students in September, it would need a temporary emergency HVAC unit to replace the failed geothermal system while also looking for a more long-term solution. In October, after receiving an assessment of the existing system and recommendations for repair or replacement, the Board supported replacing the failed geothermal system with a traditional HVAC system and unanimously voted to approve the interim funding request of $3.2 million to respond to the HVAC failure, as did the BET. I'm here to ask you to support the Board's request for $3.2 million for the Hamilton Avenue HVAC replacement. I understand that there's been some confusion regarding our ask, and to be clear, our interim request of $3.2 million is to support the following three items: to cover the fees required to rent the current emergency HVAC temporary unit, which at this point is $411,000, which will cover the cost of the rental of the unit through the end of June 2024. It is also to cover consulting in A&E, which is $190,000, for the design funds for a traditional system, and $2.5 million for the new HVAC replacement. We're aware there's also been discussion regarding postponement of this item and reducing the interim appropriation by $2.6 million. This would leave the Board with approximately $600,000, which should cover the cost of the temporary unit for this school year and the cost of the A&E consulting services to design a traditional HVAC system. It's critical that the Board, at the very least, get the funding to maintain the temporary unit, which would allow us to support the needs of the building through the end of this school year. Should the item be postponed in order to allow for additional community conversation about geothermal versus traditional systems, the Board would need to come back for another interim, as the cost to support the emergency HVAC temporary unit is approximately $25,000 to $30,000 per month based on the season. Timing is crucial. Should the RTM approve our request this evening, we will be able to apply to the state for grant, which will cover 20% of the cost of the new unit by the December 31st deadline. This would then allow the Board to be able to get our work done during the summer months when students are not in school, as we have been assured that option three would allow the Board to have a new system installed and operational prior to the start of the school in fall, whereas a geothermal hybrid option, which also uses gas, would most likely not be able to be installed by then. Should the interim also be postponed, it will most likely mean having to rent the temporary unit for another year, as this type of work can only be done during the summer months. Additionally, the Board would also need added funding for new design process and to inspect the wells that are currently on site, as nobody has inspected them for any damage at this point. Should there be a change to the... We would need to inspect them, basically, if there was a change to a hybrid geothermal system. And finally, should the RTM vote not to approve the full appropriation, please know that the Board does want to emphasize how critical it is for the RTM to approve at a minimum $600,000 to support the emergency solution that we have already committed to fund through the end of the school year, so our students can have both heat and air. Either way, the Board wants to thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt DeChamp to be followed by Myra Klockenbrink. Matt DeChamp is online, Jenny, and he gets two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Matt DeChamp, and I'm a member of the Budget Overview Committee and the Energy Management Advisory Committee. I urge you to postpone item 13. The BOC and all of the committees for which this item was referred were not provided the necessary cost analysis required to make an informed decision on this significant appropriation. At the end of the November BOC meeting, no cost analysis was provided to fix the existing geothermal option recommended by the energy consultant hired to inspect the Hamav system, and incomplete figures were presented for the NatGas system. In subsequent meetings of the Finance, Public Works, and Education Committee meetings, incomplete project and cost information and other concerns resulted in each committee either supporting postponement or not approving the funds at all. And as was reported earlier, the BOC voted to postpone item 13 unanimously at our meeting held earlier tonight for the reasons I am discussing. Last week, an estimate was circulated by the consultant hired by the town that showed the geo-system repair and enhancement option that they recommended would cost approximately $2.2 million. The install of a NatGas system would cost $400,000 more upfront. A new report by another consultant recently priced the project at $1.8 million. That estimate is called, quote, "a construction budget order of magnitude estimate," end quote. This is a rough guess, and we should expect significant variance. The lifecycle analysis costs of the geothermal system are not known. What is known, they will be less because Greenwich will not be required to purchase natural gas for the next 50 years should this system be installed. The postponement of item 13 will allow the BOE Facilities Department time to calculate these costs with greater precision, as well as any necessary additional costs required to support the geothermal system so we can get a bleak financial picture. Please vote yes to postpone item 13.
Thank you. Myra Klockenbrink to be followed by Janet Stone-McWiggin.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, again, members and guests. Regarding this item, it is very concerning that this appropriation has come before us in this very rough and preliminary state. The Board of Education and the BET voted to appropriate $3.2 million without a real understanding of the present and future costs of this HVAC system at the Hamilton Avenue School. To vote for a natural gas power system without a full understanding of the installation costs nor a full understanding of the operational costs going forward nor the replacement costs should the system fail is irresponsible. In addition, the BOE, BET, and the BOC did not make these decisions with the recommended geothermal system priced out when they met in November. The engineers that the Facilities Department of the schools hired to evaluate the failed system recommended that the existing geothermal system be rehabilitated, but no estimate was presented to them before they made their decision. This is not a responsible process, especially for an item that is not cheap and that ties the town to volatile natural gas prices that continue to escalate. We need better leadership on this issue. These systems are expensive to install, expensive to run, and expensive to replace. They commit our town to millions of dollars in operational costs that are unknown, volatile, and make our town vulnerable to the pollution they create. I urge you to postpone this item, and I further urge the BOE and the BET to do their homework and practice prudent, informed fiscal decision-making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet Stone-McWiggin to be followed by Julie DeChamp.
So, once again, for the record, my name is Janet Stone-McWiggin. I'm a Greenwich Select person, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this motion. It would be in the town's best financial interest to first understand the cost of repairing or replacing the existing geothermal system as recommended by the consultants hired by the town and comparing that cost to the $3.2 million requested to replace the system with a conventional HVAC system. But how did we get here? The Energy Management Advisory Committee is an excellent committee with expertise and experience on this very topic. It has been following this issue for at least a year. We need to give EMAC a stronger voice in these decisions. Further, the Board of Education only has two HVAC staff for 15 schools in the Havemeyer Building. Whether our systems are conventional or geothermal, that is a very thin staffing model. For the well-being of our staff and students, we need to be more supportive of our schools. So thank you for your consideration, and please vote to postpone this item.
Thank you. Julie DeChamp to be followed by Stephen Meskers. There are five people left, so that's 10 minutes total. I think in deference to them, we'll let them get through. Julie DeChamp to be followed by Stephen Meskers. Ms. DeChamp, could you raise your hand? It's Matt DeChamp's wife, so it's probably the same account.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Julie DeChamps. I serve on the Sustainability Committee and am speaking in favor to postpone item 13. There has been a flurry of figures put forward for the requested gas-fired HVAC system at Hamav School. These estimates are rough and inconsistent without basis in engineering designs or scope of project. A postponement is necessary to evaluate these upfront costs further. The Farnsworth Group recommended to repair the existing geothermal system, pricing this work at $2.3 million. As noted, the wells are generally the most expensive component of the system, and those at Hamilton Avenue were found to be intact and serviceable. It's important to note the estimate includes two backup-fired, gas-fired boilers costing nearly $600,000, a quarter of the total. I consulted with three public school districts in Connecticut with geothermal systems, all managed in-house. Not one has a backup boiler. They're all heated and cooled with 100% geothermal. A postponement will allow for the BOE to investigate if these expensive supplemental boilers are in need or a nice-to-have and refine its pricing on the geothermal repair. Not only are these first costs inaccurate and incomplete, there has been no work on the lifecycle costs. Just this evening, Manchester Public Schools reported that they are saving $50,000 each month on utilities at just one of their three NetZero schools featuring geothermal. There are significant savings with geothermal, and a postponement will give more time for the BOE to evaluate the operating costs, as well as federal and state funding available for both options, so this body can make a fiscally responsible decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Meskers to be followed by Peter Schweinfirth.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm sensitive to the call to call the question to shorten the timeframe. I'm not going to repeat any of the arguments that were made to date. I support the arguments in terms of cost estimates and the problems with how we have presented it. There's a couple of points I'll just simply make. One, in the course of our conversations, neither I nor the ranking member of... Or, I guess I'm the ranking member of our delegation, the Senator Ryan Fazio, both of who sit on Energy and Technology up at the state, were consulted or asked to consult with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So whatever was developed here, there was no involvement from us at the state level. That has two issues. One, we would bring in experts. Two, we have access, or potentially have access, to resources in cash in the way of state grants. None of our expertise, none of our influence has been utilized or used in reaching these decisions. I think that's appalling. It puts a target on my back to ask to deliver resources, but I'm telling you, no one's asking, and that's a problem, whether it's for me or the rest of the delegation, including our state senator. Two, to the mind, given where we are in the Infrastructure Act, I do not know that we've approached our federal delegation to ask for any earmarks for any of this. The idea that we're going to step forward, conceptually, I want you just to understand, the idea we're going to rip out, cement the wells of a geothermal system to make a voice vote in favor of burning natural gas, regardless of how you feel about climate change or global warming, we're committing to a higher-priced operation for 30 years. And we've got 15 buildings. Is this commitment, our commitment to natural gas in every building going forward? We need to think about that in terms of our operating costs. We battle on operating costs every year, every year in this budget for saving $200,000. Okay, thanks.
Peter Schweinfirth to be followed by Stephen Hall. Is Peter Schweinfirth here? Or... Okay.
Yes, I'm...
Mr. Schweinfirth?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Peter Schweinfirth, and I currently serve as Chair of the Board of Selectmen's Energy Management Advisory Committee. I've been working with the Greenwich Public School System for over a year now to study the situation at Hamilton Avenue School. I agree with the positions of the previous speakers on this topic to postpone a decision on the Hamilton Avenue appropriations request. I would like to reiterate this evening that EMAC has been and will continue to be an active resource to GPS and other town bodies in investigating energy-efficient and cost-effective solutions for town buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Hall to be followed by our final speaker, Steve Rubin.
Madam Moderator and several RTM members, I'll be very brief. Everybody has talked about the technical issues that we're seeing. My background, I was on the Energy Task Force that ended its mission in 2019 for the town with a bunch of recommendations, one of them being that we should be looking at geothermal. But my real background is in project management. I started out my career at Bechtel doing nuclear power plants and fossil power plants, and I've handled the work out of major projects across the country, many of them municipal projects. And from that perspective, I look at this whole project, I listen to all this, I looked at the documentation that's been provided, and basically, my answer is, this project is not ready for prime time. That's it.
Thank you. Stephen Rubin is our final speaker on this item.
Most of you know I like to do the Cliff Notes of everything. Virtually everything that I had wanted to say in this three-page speech has been said, so I'm going to be very brief. I've never seen every committee that's taken up an item want to postpone it like this. In addition to every committee, I just want you to know that District Three, where I'm the chairperson, every single person in our district voted overwhelmingly supporting the geothermal system. We're the district that has Hamilton Avenue School. So as everybody else said, let's be fiscally responsible and let's postpone it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr.... Yes, I will do that in a minute. Okay? Well, if they want to approve the motion to postpone, this item goes away. Your amendment goes away. Yeah. No, if the... Okay, stop. A motion to postpone brings this item back in January 2024. Okay? Finance has a motion to reduce the appropriation to $411,055, which is the temporary HVAC unit for the year. Okay? If the motion to postpone goes forward, the finance motion doesn't come to the floor. That does not preclude the Board of Education from coming back next month with an interim appropriation for whatever amount they think they need. Okay? Doesn't preclude it. It just puts everything off for one month. So the Board of Ed, should this motion to postpone go through, is free to put on the call in two weeks an item requesting a reduced amount for whatever they believe they need for their temporary HVAC unit. Okay, I'm calling the vote. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? I'm calling for the vote. Okay? It's a vote on the motion to postpone. So everyone understands, if you want to postpone this item to January 2024, you would vote yes. If you don't want to postpone it, you would vote no. Okay, the vote is now open. Okay, if you could please cast your vote. District Six, it's everybody district, but we just put District Six. District 6, it's everybody district, but we just put District 6, Public Works, Education, motion to postpone item 13 to January 2024. You have two minutes to vote. You have about 30 seconds. Okay, I'm going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, I have the vote on the motion to postpone. Those in favor, 146, opposed 21, abstaining 2. That item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay, now, item 14 is correlated with item 13, and I believe that becomes irrelevant because we did not appropriate anything. So there is no grant for which the Board of Education would be accepting or rejecting for HVAC, nor are there any schematic drawings that would be prepared and outline specifications because we did not appropriate anything. Okay, so that item is not going to be coming before us this evening, which brings us to item 15, which is the $400,000 Parkway Property Water Filtration System. Could we have that motion, please? Or could we have that resolution, please? Is there somebody that could read that? Anyone could read it at this point. Mr. Harris, you look very official over there. Why don't you read it? Oh, Kim, Ms. Blank, do you have it?
Okay.
15, it's.
Can you remind people that we have a bonding resolution to come?
I will. Because I see people leaving. Early and often.
Okay.
Item 16, which is coming up after 15, it will be amended to reflect, I believe, only $400,000, which is what this appropriation is. It's a bonding resolution which does require a majority of the entire membership to pass, which is 116 people. Okay.
Okay.
All yours.
All right. Resolved that the sum of $400,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated for the Parkway Property Water Filtration System and to be added to the following accounts, TBD by comptroller.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that consider this? I realize that this should have gone on the consent calendar were the bonding not tethered to the other one.
Right.
So, you know.
All right. Item 15 is a request for a $400,000 appropriation for a water filtration system at Parkway. Dr. Jones and Dan Watson presented this item to us. Leslie Moriarty of the BET was also available to answer questions. Following testing by a town environmental consultant, it was discovered that water from Parkway well contains PFAS, which are microplastic contamination. Although the Connecticut Department of Public Health has not yet set safe levels for PFAS contaminants, the town was advised that it needed to remediate this. Greenwich Public Schools began work on an emergency basis using operating funds. It has been using bottled water for all potable water and will continue to do so until the filtration system is running. The schools are constructing a new pump and filter house to serve Parkway School and the Gems Building, which draw water from the well. Work is already underway, and if we do not approve these funds, the schools would have to absorb them in their operating budget. In our discussion, members of the committee noted that there have been longstanding issues with well water at Parkway. They suggest that the district investigate the cost of extending the pipes to tap into an aquarium water main. We also asked how they know that the filtration will be sufficient if there are no standards yet for acceptable PFAS levels. They said that they've been advised that this should reduce levels sufficiently, but that there is additional space in the pump house to add filtration if necessary. We voted to approve this item 1200.
Thank you. Finance, Brooks Harris, to be followed by Craig Ametson with Public Works.
Thank you. Most of the items we discussed were already discussed by education. The only other thing to add is we did not, we did not have an opportunity to ask if drilling a well into a different aquifer were possibly a way to intermediate this on a more economic basis. But since we didn't know, we thought that we would need to approve this and that the kids need clean water. Finance approved this 1200.
Thank you. Public Works report, Craig Ametson.
Good evening. I'll be brief, you know, that's not a strength. On the PFAS contamination, something we're not saying a lot about is, this isn't the first time we've had this incident, this issue out there. And the system that's currently in there is not doing an adequate job of it. So it's a $400,000 project to construct a new pump and filter house to address it, and they feel quite confident they can clean up this problem. The PFAS, if you go back in history and where this came from, a lot of it has to do, they believe, with the fire suppression foam that was utilized at Westchester County Airport, that that in fact has leached into the groundwater. And this PFAS is one of these, what is called a forever chemical. It just doesn't go away unless you filter it out. So we took this up, we passed this appropriation 1000. Districts 9 and 10 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. That, no one has signed up to debate this item, thank God. So, so item number 15 now comes to a vote. Craig, can you prepare the voting window? Okay. Item 15 is a $400,000 appropriation for Parkway Property Water Filtration System. If you're in favor of this appropriation, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the clock? Okay. Your timer, you have two minutes. You have about 30 seconds before the window closes. Okay, the window is closed for this item. Craig, could you please close the window? Okay, I have the vote result on this item, the appropriation for Parkway School. Those in favor, 144, opposed 2, abstaining 1. That item has carried. Now we go to the bonding resolution for this item, which will need to be substituted. Who is reading that resolution in? Mr. Harris, I just need somebody to read it. Kimberly Blank will read it. Okay. It's just going to be for a substitute amount. I believe we're only bonding $400,000.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the issuance of $400,000 bonds of the town to meet a portion of the capital budget appropriation for the replacement of the Parkway Elementary School well, and I think will strike the next language for fiscal year 2324, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. And then there's the language of the resolution as it appears on the call.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So moved.
That being offered on behalf of Kimberly Blank does require a second. Is anyone second? Item has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Who would like to offer their committee reports?
The Education Committee report, as we voted 1200 in favor.
Thank you.
Finance discussed the terms of the bond, and they were consistent with past bonds we've issued. They're also consistent with the BET's debt policy. So we approved it 910 with 2 absent.
Great.
Thank you.
L and R next, maybe? Who wants to go? L and R, Public Works, and BOC, those are the three that I have. And I would just ask people, if you're online or if you're still here, we do need 116 people to hang with us for another 10 minutes until we call for this vote.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Members of the RTM, guests, legislative rules took up this up on Monday. We spent the entire part of our discussion on item 13, so we had a better understanding of what this money was going to be used for. But, so we are now approving a bonding resolution for item 15 or 16, 15, and our vote was, let's see, 1000 on legal order and merits, but this is 3 and 10 absent.
Thank you. We do have a report, so if this is your license plate, it looks like it's an Audi, license plate BD 91213. You are blocking a handicap spot, and the person who is in the handicap spot is attempting to leave and cannot leave. So if you own the Audi with BD 91213, could you please move it immediately? Who's going next? Public Works and BOC are the last two.
Cut to the chase. Public Works took this reduced bonding item up, 1000. Districts 9 and 10 absent.
Okay. I understand BOC is going to pass. So that brings us to the vote on the bonding resolution. Item 16 is amended to $400,000. Okay. If you're in favor of the $400,000 bonding resolution, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. As a reminder, it does require 116 members to vote in the affirmative to pass it, a majority of the entire membership. Craig, could you please open the window? Okay, you have two minutes. You have about 30 seconds on the clock before the window closes. The voting window has closed. Craig, could you please close the vote? We squeaked in with a little room. The vote on the bonding resolution, 135 in favor, 2 opposed with 2 abstentions. That item has carried. Okay. That brings us to item 19, the Old Greenwich School Municipal Improvement, which came to the RTM upon referral of one or two Greenwich property owners. Do we have someone who will be reading that resolution for us? Kimberly Blank, you seem to be the lucky person standing so close to that podium.
Whereas Section 100 of the Town Charter provides that any person owning property within the town may refer municipal improvement approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the RTM within 30 days of approval by the commission, and that the RTM shall have the power to approve such proposal or reject it. And whereas Daniel, actually, whereas Amir and Nai and Alex Nai, property owners, referred MIPLPZ 2023-370 to the RTM on October 27, 2023, now therefore be it resolved that the RTM approves MIPLPZ 2023-370 relating to the Old Greenwich School.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? Mr. Rubin? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. And the reports on the committees for this.
All right. Item 19 is a petition brought by two residents to approve the MI related to Old Greenwich. Presenters on this item included Alex Nanai, one of the petitioners, James Waters, Chair of the Old Greenwich Building Committee, Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony of the Board of Ed and Old Greenwich Building Committee, Karen Kowalski and Laura Costin of the Board of Ed, and Peter Lowe of the P&amp;Z and Old Greenwich Building Committee. Mr. Nai told the committee that he had brought this petition because he had two main concerns with the project. First, he's concerned about the cost for a renovation of the building. He believes that it may be wiser to just build a new building, enabling the town to resolve all issues with the building and get a new building that is up to code. He said that in his experience, renovation costs can be unpredictable as you may run into unexpected issues, and that in the end, a new build may be similar in cost. Second, he is concerned that students will remain in the building during the renovation and may be exposed to toxins from parts of the building that are undergoing construction. He cited a report on the Old Greenwich Building Committee website that outlines the various toxic substances that will require remediation. Mr. Waters and Mr. Mercanti Anthony explained that the current renovation project is projected to cost $45 million and begin in the summer of 2025. He said that they'd done a rough estimate of the cost of a new build and believe it would cost approximately $75 to $85 million for a new school. He said the Old Greenwich community had adamantly advocated for maintaining the current structure, as many believe it's integral to the neighborhood character. Ms. Kowalski noted that this is not just about the facade, but that the building has good bones, as many older buildings do, and is beloved in the community. Mr. Mercanti Anthony explained that the Old Greenwich School is the subject of a lawsuit because it is not ADA accessible. The Office of Civil Rights has accepted the renovation plan and the 2025 start date as part of the district plan to remediate inaccessibility. Any changes to this plan might jeopardize that agreement. They said that the current plan will add four classrooms, make the building ADA accessible, and deal with the lower-level drainage issues. They have a very detailed plan to manage the work while students are in the building. Their contractor frequently deals with remediation work and has never had a problem where they had to shut school due to air quality with contaminants reaching the occupied portion of the building. They've publicized these issues within the community and do not have significant objections to their plans. In our questioning and comments, members of the committee urged them to have a contingency plan ready for providing an alternate location for students, should that be necessary. We voted to approve 12-0-0. Members said they believe it's time to approve and move forward, and that they believe this renovation had broad support from the Old Greenwich community. One member noted that while they approved of this, they believe that it's currently at the upper bound of what they believe is reasonable for renovation and do not want to see it go higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg with our Land Use Committee report.
Evening again. So despite the fact that I communicated with Mr. Nenai several times, he did not appear at the Land Use Committee meeting. Our discussion was similar to what you just heard. You know, once a, once any property owner refers the MI to the RTM, the project no longer has municipal improvement status. So it's critical that the RTM vote for this to restore MI. The Land Use Committee voted 11-0-0. District 4 was absent.
Thank you. Legislative Rules and BOC, I have, and then wrapping it up with District 6. Kit Burgweger of our LNR Committee.
LNR took this up Monday night. We had James Waters, Chairman of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Patrick LaFleur, Director in Town Planning, Peter Lowe, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and Michael Mercanti Anthony with the Board of Education. As has happened with the land use, although we contacted Mr. Nenai on behalf of Legislative Rules and invited him to attend, he did not come. One of our, the delegate from District 6 actually had contact with him via text and tried to track him down, but he was reportedly somewhere in the building, and then he disappeared. We don't know exactly what happened, but he was not there to make his presentation. The allegations that, on which the reference of the MI had been based were unfounded by, as demonstrated by Mr. Waters' testimony. He noted that the Building Committee held 71 meetings over the last 13 months. Many were open to the public. There were ample opportunities to be informed, to make comments. They held hundreds of public meetings over the last six years, allowing many opportunities to publicly comment. And there was noted that the Board of Education was unanimously in favor of the BI, I mean MI. One of our delegates asked if any of the petitioners had attended any of the Building Committee meetings, and if they're properly noted, noticed. They had been, according to Mr. Waters, and none of the petitioners attended any of the meetings. So Legislative and Rules voted 10-0-0 on legal order and the merits, with Districts 3 and 10 absent.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC, to be followed by Colleen Jenkins with the District 6 report.
Good evening. Before I give my remarks, I just want to say that this is my last RTM meeting. As a fierce member of District 7, it's been 18 wonderful years representing District 7, and I just want to encourage the great work that this body has done over the years. We are the eyes and ears to our neighborhoods, and it really matters. And I have met great people on the RTM in our neighborhoods and feel very proud to have been serving this institution. So I just wanted to say that. All right. So, thank you. All right, so here we are with our last item. James Waters, Chair of the Old Greenwich Building Committee and BOC District 12 Delegate, addressed the two specific issues described in the MI item. One issue was a cost comparison of new versus rebuild, and the other was the safety of students during remediation. Waters began by noting the three petitioners had not attended one OGBC meeting, Old Greenwich Building Committee meeting, to express their concern or dissatisfaction. Waters indicated there was a thorough analysis of renovation versus rebuild on the new. One member noted that perhaps it was as the price escalation went from 24-plus million to 45, that kind of analysis, a second review would have been maybe the issue. Waters also described there is a thoroughly complete $3.5 million abatement plan for hazardous material during the renovation of Old Greenwich School, and there is nothing for parents or the community to be concerned. He indicated the Greenwich Public School ideal plan will be to perform the work over the summer. However, the education specifications also includes a phased occupancy renovation, which means the work could occur, the abatement work, at night, on the weekends, and during school breaks. The Health Department has stringent requirements for this work, and Old Greenwich Building Committee has hired hazmat experts with lagen and downs to provide a controlled, healthy environment. Waters mentioned there are currently over 31 hazardous material abatements going on in the state right now, with schools in session. A motion was made and seconded, and the BOC unanimously supported the MI with 11-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Jenkins with the District 6 report.
So I invited all three petitioners that objected to the MI. One had withdrawn his name, the other two were a couple, and the husband came. It was really quite a privilege for him to speak to so many important officials that attended our meeting. And sadly, he had not taken the opportunity to attend other meetings that were open to the public. It is a neighbor of the school. The district then decided that it, we wanted to emphatically support this municipal improvement, and we took a vote, 7-0-1, in favor of the municipal improvement. Thank you for your support.
I think it was 17-0-1.
You are right.
Okay. That concludes our committee reports debate on item number 19. Mr. Waters, you are being recognized as the principal proponent. Yes. I think what we will do is we will offer Mr. Waters an opportunity, and I don't know if Mr. Nenai is here or not, but we'll offer him an opportunity if he's online, since he is the petitioner that brought this forward. And then if you would like to offer that motion afterwards, we'll do it. We still have one item after this, so don't get so excited that it's going to be adjourned. Okay. Mr. Waters, you have five minutes on the clock.
Good evening, members of the RTM. I'm James Waters, Chair of the Old Greenwich Building Committee. I've gotten to know many of you through my service on the RTM and its budget overview and finance committees. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the OGS Building Committee. I want to start by thanking everyone for the thoughtful questions on the OGS municipal improvement the past couple weeks. We're thrilled to have been able to brief the RTM on this important project. I want to thank the BOC and the Education, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules Committees and the District 6 delegation for their unanimous support for the OGS MI. You're in good company. The OGS MI has unanimous support from the Board of Ed, the Board of Selectmen, and the P&amp;Z. Let me say that again. The OGS MI has been unanimously supported by all elements of town government that have considered it. We ask for your support tonight and to vote yes on item 19. You may have heard the OGS Building Committee has forged a great team and drawn bipartisan praise across town. I promised all of you in September 22 that to get the OGS renovation done right, we must mold a group of highly qualified members into a great team. While we have a long way to go, I can report tonight that we have an excellent and collaborative team at the helm. Much of that is thanks to you who approved all voting members of the Building Committee. This Building Committee is moving with a purpose. I think you're aware that OGS is in desperate need of a renovation. We're working on a design that will address core deficiencies in the building, as Dr. Jen Bencivango will share tonight, and expect to complete our pre-construction process this summer. We're doing a tremendous amount of diligence and regularly updating the community. You probably know this project has been a key topic of discussion in hundreds of public meetings over the past six years. The Building Committee alone will meet for the second, 72nd time tomorrow morning. That includes eight community forums during which we regularly discuss the renovation design, our diligence timeline, the debate between renovation and a new school, asbestos, negative air, fire-rated walls, our commitment to safely executing this phased occupied renovation. We received excellent feedback and posted it to our website. While I'm happy the two people appealing the MI will be heard, it's important to note the appellant's haven't attended a single meeting. They also haven't contacted anyone on the Building Committee. If they had, they would have learned this project has been well-vetted and that an expert team of construction professionals has been hired. Their points have been publicly considered and addressed on multiple occasions. Tonight, I want to share key points of feedback we've heard from hundreds of residents. First, the community likes our renovation design. In the earliest months of the Building Committee, we actively sought feedback from OGS parents, staff, and neighbors and have incorporated it. We're currently working to finish design development this February, at which point we should be in a position to submit our final site plan to P&amp;Z. We'll then move to complete construction documents by June. If you'd like to see our design materials, please look at our website, attend the Building Committee meeting, or reach out to me. Second, the community strongly prefers a renovation to a new construction school. As you know, the Board of Ed decides ed specs, and the Town Charter directs the Building Committee to adhere to ed specs. To this point, we've heard overwhelming support for the ed specs calling for a renovation. The community is aware a new school is likely to cost nearly double the cost of a renovation. Third, the community understands what our diligence has uncovered and is standard, and that our project team is experienced in safely administering school projects and working to build the, and is working to build a construction phasing plan. We've actively explained in depth the stringent federally and state mandated safeguards that will be followed for all abatement and construction activities. These are standard for projects like ours. We'll continue this active dialogue going forward and make sure all contingencies are investigated. Finally, we've heard the community wants this project moved forward as quick as possible. We originally hoped to start this coming summer. Unfortunately, that window's closing since the BET hasn't provided construction funds. It's more likely we'll start next summer. This feedback, all of this feedback, has been incorporated in our meeting minutes and posted on our website. We're always happy to speak with you. The Building Committee will get our updated estimates in February. We'll brief the Board of Ed, the BET, and the RTM when available. You've heard the numbers. It's what they are. We'll update you when we got more numbers. Our team is going to be working through Christmas and New Year's to get this next estimate done. Thank you for your time and your support. Let's get this project done together for our community. Please vote yes on item 19.
Thank you. Okay. Is Mr., is Alex Nenai here? He's the gentleman that is the property owner that submitted the petition. Is he here? Is Jenny Larkin here? To see if he is here. He's, is, and is his wife, I think it's Amira Nenai? Is she?
No, Nenai.
No, Nenai. Okay. Mr. Rubin, did you have a motion that you wanted to offer? Okay. Okay. A motion to call the question immediately cuts off debate and proceeds to a vote. It does require two-thirds to pass. It's going to be hard to figure out if it's two-thirds, so let's try and do it by unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we will call for a record vote. Is anyone objecting to the motion to cut off debate and immediately proceed to a vote on this item? Hearing none, that item has, that motion has passed on unanimous consent. Craig, could you please prepare the voting thing? There is one more item after this, so don't rush and leave. Item 19, approve the Old Greenwich School Municipal Improvement. Okay. If you're in favor of approving it, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please start the clock? You've got two minutes on the clock. I know. We're going to keep the vote open a little longer. Some people's batteries have gone kaput because the meeting is so long. So we're now replacing batteries so that you can vote, so just be patient with us.
By the way, because that's what I'm doing going forward next term.
Have all batteries been replaced? Ms. Lee, you've clicked your clicker? Okay. So we are going to close the vote. Okay, the vote on item 19, approving the municipal improvement for the Old Greenwich School, those in favor, 126, opposed, four, abstaining, two. That item has carried, and we now come to our final item of the evening. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to read the final item? And it needs to be a substitute resolution because of the date. Kip Bergweger, just reading the resolution in for us.
Madam Moderator, I thought this was just a scrivener's error, but I can make it a substitute resolution.
Yeah, it is because it's in the resolve. Yep.
Resolve, that is a sense of the meeting that candidates for moderator and moderator pro temp of the 2024-2025 Representative Town Meeting file their names with a brief statement of their qualifications with the town clerk on or before noon of December 22, 2023 for inclusion in the call of the January 16, 2024 meeting.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of that substitute resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us, and Mr. Bergweger's committee is the only committee that's giving a report.
Good. When we first discussed this, we had no one else helping us. It was just Legislative and Rules members. I noted that this action has been taken and approved every year for the last six terms and saw no reason why it should not be supported again. Delegate from District 1 felt that the SOMER to be unnecessary, as if candidates filed statements later, it would be taken into account by voters, and that SOMER has no enforceability. He also felt that it should include requirements for committee chairs. The item was passed on legal order 10-0-0 and on the merits 9-1-0, but District 1 voting no as for the reasons stated above. The committee also voted to waive the second, to move to waive the second read rule so that this will become effective this year instead of next.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make that motion.
You can make it right now. No one has signed up to debate the item.
Waive the second, move to waive the second read rule.
Right. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Does anyone object to that? We can adopt it by unanimous consent if everyone agrees. If not, we will take a record vote. Is there anyone that objects to waiving the second read rule for this item? I hear nothing. So we have adopted the second read, adopted suspending the second read rule upon unanimous consent. And we can now proceed to a vote on the final item of the evening. Craig, could you please prepare the final vote of the evening, item 20? Okay. SOMER candidates for moderator, moderator pro temp, file their names, qualifications for inclusion on the call for January 2024. If you're in favor of that, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. You have two minutes on the clock. We close the vote in 32 seconds. Okay, we have closed the vote. Okay? Craig, close the vote. Okay, the vote on the SOMER is in favor, 113 opposed, zero abstaining, four. That item has carried. There being no further business, this meeting stands adjourned, and I wish you all a very happy holiday season, and I look forward to seeing everyone in 2024. Get home safely.